We call the meeting ordered.
I think, is that Jeanette? No, I, I needed him. Who is it? Is it me? Yeah.
I'm not logged in.
Did you unmute?
I didn't touch.
Okay, well, I'll leave. Okay.
Yeah.
Father in heaven, we come before you today as board of commissioners, others, as we go about the businesses county. As we feel your presence today, we will conduct business in orderly fashion. And we do our best and exercise great diligence as we go forward with the business of the county in Christ's name, amen.
Let's lead to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I believe Ryan is going to join us at some point, but I know he had some other. Real call.
Commissioner Noster.
Present.
Commissioner Bockel.
Present.
Commissioner Glover.
Here. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions on the agenda?
So, Dan had sent the seven fifteen minutes yesterday. I saw two sets of eyes on it and corrections we could add it to this if you prefer, or wait till the next week?
I think it'd be good to go ahead and add it and then it's done.
Okay, do you have a chance to review them or not?
I have and Suzanne has.
Then, motion to add the minutes. Seventeen twenty twenty minutes.
And would we add the minutes?
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second.
And adopt the agendas presented or as amended.
And adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, approval from the minutes of the previous, I assume that is plural meetings?
It would be seven fifteen Board of Health and seven fifteen Commissioners Meeting.
What about the DSS?
Yeah, they're working. Not until next meeting.
They were included in the documents, all right?
No, we haven't had that meeting to have minutes as of yet.
Okay, yeah, you sent those, right?
I've, I've sent them to you. I usually just record them the last regular meeting, what? Commissioners meeting is the DSS, just one time a month.
So we're doing the seventeen, seven fifteen Board of Health, the seven fifteen twenty twenty, are there any others on here?
Board of Health and Regular Commissioners.
Just those two?
Just those two.
That made us small.
You want to back forward?
Little bit, yeah. Better, is that better, Jean? Yeah. Okay. Welcome, Ryan. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second on the minutes.
I think we already did. That was the issue.
We have voted.
I'm sorry, on the minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're waiting for a motion and a second on the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes with, as amended.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comment period. There's no public present in person. There are people on the call, on the Zoom. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the consent agenda?
It is as stated, no corrections or deletions.
Michelle?
I don't have anything. I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Susan Bothell set, motion, Jean Glover seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is County Official Department head reports, Jay Serenson from the airport. Jay?
Good morning. Am I showing up? Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, picture of you.
Well, a quick overview. The DOLA grant was submitted for fence on the north end of the airport, mini grant. And it hasn't, we actually had a pretty good year as far as cattle goes, so it's not a critical fence. We had the offs have, have their cattle pretty well trained. They sold theirs to David Colville, and he contacted me, so that wasn't an issue, and that's always been easy. Our, our other Lisi that ran livestock through this year, I guess through a lot of communications, finally really worked with us, so we didn't have a problem there. But we've got a, we've got a application in, it's for eight thousand feet of fence running parallel to the runway on the north side. If we get that money, shouldn't be a problem in getting it installed. It's fifty fifty matching, so it'd be five thousand to us, and actually it'd be about fifty, about seven thousand to us if we do the full length of it, which would be nice. Fog seal, we're working on that, a meeting with the actual contractor that laid the original runway, the big runway, six two four. He's going to come out Monday and talk to us. There are since we're not FAA funded, we don't have to comply with some of their very stringent requirements, and according to some of the asphalt people, they're not really that good. An example is Alamosa had a fog seal done with some kind of emulsion that didn't last, didn't serve their purpose, lasted for a very short time. So I think by talking with some some knowledgeable people, especially the guy that laid our runway, and, and Pat Sullivan really recommends him and speaks highly of his work. I think we can get that, get a quality product without having to jump a bunch of hoops. We'll need to put it out to bid, but he'll come out and we'll, we'll help spec that. It would be nice, again, to have airport consultant. I've spent a lot of time trying to learn about, about asphalt and engineering, and I think for the county standpoint, it'd be especially going down the road, it'd be to the benefit to go ahead and put out an RFP for airport consultant. They typically charge about eighteen percent of the project. I think in this day and age, we can probably negotiate a better, better rate, so if, if it were eighteen percent at a hundred and seventy thousand, we're looking at thirty some thousand dollars to a consultant. I don't know that we need that for the fog seal at this point in time, but we'll definitely need it when we get to start laying an over, an over two inch overlay, so I'd like to keep that on the table as an option, and, and maybe even discuss having them put the bid out, have them, and, and looking at some of the contracts around the state, you can you can pick and choose what project you want them on, so I think if we get them ahead of time and have them on contract, and we say, okay, this one, we need some help on. That, that would they have the expertise, I don't, and, and they have some of the time, which I'm getting limited on. Fog seal can be done. I've talked to a couple of the contractors around. They're kind of hurting, so that's good for us. So we can, we can get, move it up. I was looking at October. I think we can actually get that completed in September. Jet A, Jet A is still on the back burner, just haven't had time to go talk to the people that want to put money up and get that going. There, you, you know, it's not just a matter of Jet A, it's a matter of Jet A, and then the maintenance of the system, and having somebody available that on call out, because these guys typically don't want to pump their own Jet A, so it's not a priority right now. Getting the fog seal is, fencing is, so that's on the burner, still, still talking to people as they come in that are interested. We've had a couple of guys in turbine props that have asked about it and expressed an interest, so it's just a matter of follow-up and one-on-one conversations with them, and seeing what they're willing to put it together. Leases, we're, I guess we have, still have a bit of an issue with how the leases are going out, and, and I think one of the first things we need to get done is a rewrite of our lease contracts with Ryan's help, and include the twelve hundred dollar fee for electrical hookup, and help us look at a couple of the other leases and clean those up. Airbox, the, their aerobatic proposal is still on the table. It's apparently at the FAA. I'm still, I'm still not sold on the idea. I think some of the board members were, but we're talking about a one mile square, if I understand it, a one mile circle around the airport is designated as an aerobatic practice area. That's different than a competitive airbox. So we've got to resolve some of that, so we're, we're still talking with the guys in Pagosa that are, have applied for it. I've got a contact with the FAA, so if any of you are contacted about the airbox, the airport board hasn't formally supported it or, or opposed it. I just want you to know that coming down the road, if the FAA sends a letter to us, we need to be on the same page, and it still may be workable. I have my concern, safety concerns, but that's for discussion, and I just, just want to make sure we don't make any decisions on it without full board input. Questions for me? I've got one more, I guess. The C dot, we bought a, a front-end loader about three years ago, I think, which has worked real well. C dot has another auction coming up. I'm not sure there's any equipment that we want, but we could get a, we could get a snowplow, an additional loaders, sweepers and things, which would be eighty percent funded by the state. And maybe with this, with the C dot's funding going downhill, we ought to take advantage of that. Patrick did contact me about a snowplow that's, they want a surplus. It's a twenty-four foot truck. He thinks it'd run fine for the airport. He'd like to push some of that responsibility to the airport. He'd give the truck to us. We don't have a place to store it, but it would be okay outside with an engine block heater. Becomes a matter of time being able to, for me to be able to do that. When I, when I started part-time with this, I didn't have any jobs. Now I've got part-time airport, part-time flight instruction, and starting August seventeenth, I will be teaching two high school classes, which is really exciting. So my time is, is a bit limited, but I think, I think we can work that out. Question for me?
Jay on the airbox, I understood you to say that it is a one mile circle around the airport?
Well, when I, when I read the application, we were kind of led to believe that it was a box located north of the runways. The application and the way that the FAA designates it appears to be a one mile circle around the airport as an aerobatic practice area. So that, we were, I, I still wasn't a hundred percent on the airbox itself. Looking at a one mile radius around the airport raises a lot more concerns than a designated thousand-foot square box, because now we're, now we're starting to invade the both runway airspaces and pattern altitude, so I, I guess I'm just throwing out a caution to everybody that this is new information, and we need to really sit down with all the airport board and, and decide if this is something we actually want here.
As it was originally presented at the presentation I attended, it was going to be a defined area, maybe a thousand square foot or whatever, and our concerns were the markings and what have you, and he had made arrangements with the adjacent property owners to go out and put ground markers down. This is a totally different proposal.
It, it's the same proposal, but, but what we thought was going to happen was a proposal for that box, and apparently the way the FAA takes the applications, they draw a circle and designate that as a practice area. So it would be different if they were going to put on an airshow and they wanted to delineate a box for a short period of time. This is a practice area where they can come in as, pretty much as they want to. That would be a notembed airspace then, and that's my concern. We, we get travelers coming in from out of state, and yeah, they're supposed to read the notums, and, and they should, but that doesn't mean they all do. And the reality of it is, if somebody comes in from Texas, but we have guys coming up weekly almost, some of them twice a month that have residence here, and they know the airport, so they, they don't check the notums. The real concern is if we have a mid-air in, in that practice area, the liability is on, on the people coming in. But aside from that, we're talking about lives, so that's the main concern.
So what's the floor on the proposed practice?
It goes to the surface. It's the buffer.
That interferes, that interferes with our pattern then?
It does, and, and even the, even the airbox as it was presented to us would interfere legally with turbine-powered aircraft at an altitudes one thousand five hundred AGL, and that airbox space was going to start, I think, at one thousand two hundred, so we have some conflicts.
Well, that being said, it would seem to me that the airport is for the benefit of the county and the businesses and all that use it. There's no economic benefit to us to have an aerobatic practice area over our airport, I would say.
They're buying fuel. That's, that's the extent of it.
Well, that's, so negligible revenue off of that, but potential safety issues, they can close our airport by notem as I see it?
It would be notembed that, that, yeah, that airbox would be hot, and it would be similar to a parachuting area that it would be notembed as a hot area. The exception is that this, this, as it was written, covers the airport, so there may be clarification from the FAA person that's handling that application, and I don't think they're going to well, I know they won't approve it without contacting us. I just want to make sure we had a unified voice when we, when we get to it, so that's on the agenda for the next airport board meeting to, to come to a consensus. We haven't really taken a vote, or, or the airport board hasn't, so it's, that's coming up with the airport board, and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the airport manager?
I thought it was a very complete report. Thank you.
I've got one other update, and we had really good feedback from the firefighting crews that came in. We had two, or two sky crane helicopters and a Chinook. The crews used the pilot shelter extensively, and we're pretty good about putting in donations for coffee and cups and paper towels and things, but we, we on, on the other aviation websites, word is getting out that we've got a great airport with great facilities, and I'm seeing an uptick in traffic and definitely a lot more interest in purchasing hangars, so we're down to basically two hangar sites, so down the road, we're going to be looking at expansion again, so I guess, I guess that's positive.
Thank you. Again, any more questions? Job, Jay.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on then to general business administrative items. I see Adam Moore is on to discuss contract. Go ahead, Adam.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for having me. Did you, I can't remember, Trish, did you want me to present the Forest Health report as well, or handing the material to them was sufficient when I dropped it off?
So if you remember, the report was on the letter you received, that would you like a full report or just the title three agreement?
You gave me a copy of the report.
I did. I think I would be okay with just the title three presentation.
Yeah, Jean?
You too.
Title three. Title three, just do the title three.
Okay. We will jump right to that. So I sent you a copy of an updated contract. Did I not, Tricia?
Yes, and the commissioners have seen it.
All right. So a couple of, I'll go over what we accomplished last year and then go over some, some changes to the contract for this year. So we had a booth at the home and garden show again and did some presentations talking about the principal space. Education booths at the Crane Festival again. We finished the Rio Grande South Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And that was, they covered the part of Rio Grande County that was not within a fire protection district. Working on the South Fork Fire Protection District CWPP. To be honest, we've been working on that for a little over two years. We're hoping to have it ready this spring, but so just working on details on, on follow up, input information from, from some different partners. Numerous defensible space talks within subdivisions. So Dakota Park, Willow Park, Rivers Edge and Mountain View. And then handing some defensible space information to, directly to some of the communities that we couldn't reach out to as well. Any questions on what we worked on last year? Okay. So in the changes for the contract, a couple of things is, one is under, on the first page, under two for the term is, I was wondering whether we wanted to consider having it instead of renewing it every year. We have it go until the end of December of 2023. I just chose three years for, just as a, as a number. And the simplicity of that is we would still provide an update, check in with you guys at least yearly and see if there's any changes in priorities that you have, but it just simplifies a step of paperwork on both of our sides. So that's something to consider. And then moving on to the scope of work that starts on page seven. It's basically the, the same as previous years with some updates to it in regards to what we're looking at, working on. So a hot item being getting that South Fork Community Wildfire Protection Plan finished this year. And then starting to do some outreach in the communities with that. And then continuing with the education and the meeting with homeowners for the defensible space work, giving them that education. Cause we've noticed within the San Luis Valley and it's, it's been noticed around the state as well and the nation. And when you can get those one on one consultations with the homeowners, that the, the follow through on defensible space that they create is a lot higher than just seeing it in, in meetings or at community events as well. So that, that one on one touch is definitely an important step for making the communities and the citizens safer. And then the budget is, it's got an update in there. The South Fork CWPP is, it's, it's a decent chunk, but not anything obnoxious, I think. But it's, it's going to be, there's close to 40 communities that we're going to have individual assessments for in there. And that, that's taking a lot of time and, and it's going to make it a long document. But it's going to be something that's going to be more usable by those communities. And then we'd still have the same billing cycle in there. And we would still, like I said, do an update with you guys at least yearly. So any, any questions on this, on the scope of work? And then I guess the follow up question is, is there any input on communities or efforts you want us to make sure we focus on?
I don't have any questions. That's me.
Adam, if you could explain to me a little bit, the, we've got charges, what have you. Now, I assume these funds are coming from someplace else. I'm reviewing the contract right now. Source of funds on this?
That is part of the Secure Rural Schools Title III Funding Program. So the, the three different tiers of that and what Rio Grande County receives each year on that. So that would be, it would be, basically it's like a grant source of funding you guys receive. I'm sure Trish can give you more details on that aspect of it.
Okay. And then we have the billing rates of so much brochure, 74 bucks an hour and stuff, things of that nature.
Correct.
Do you have any idea what this is going to cost long run? I mean, what's the total would be?
I'll be honest, I anticipate that this year's cycle of, of 2020 through, so if we started now through about this time next year, the CWPP is going to be a big portion of it. Unfortunately, my coworker Sam Scavo is, who was living in Del Norte and was a trustee there as well for a while. He's actually moving back to his family in Pennsylvania. So we're going to be, you're looking at the, the staff for our office now. So it's going to be a little lower in the number of initiatives we take. So I, I would anticipate that for this coming cycle, even with the CWPP, that it's going to be under 9,000 and definitely under $10,000 worth. And then moving forwards, previous years, we, the services cost usually between 2,000 to 3,000 a year. So that long-term over the three to five year cycle would be 20 to 30,000.
Total for the cycle?
20 to 30,000. Yeah, if we went with a three year cycle, I would say the total would probably be 15 to 20,000.
Any other questions on this, guys?
I don't.
No. Then action on this, when you, when, do you have a deadline on when we get this back to you?
We can sign it whenever it's appropriate. We're technically, I think if we looked at it out of contract now, not that that matters at the very moment. Because just due to delays of things this year, I was slow in, in reaching out to you guys on it. But the, the sooner the better. But if you guys need to think about it and bring me back for any additional questions, we can do that as well.
Okay, we're in the budget cycle right now. I'm not sure where we are on the SRS funding or whatever it was, Title III.
I don't, they don't receive it physically. They receive it for the grant program.
And I don't think I have any questions. And so I don't know of any reason to delay that I would move that we sign the contract.
Okay, we're on motion. I, I can't, I can't think of anything. It's not a, it's not a direct general fund question. It's SRS, so it would just be, yeah, I'm fine. Second, sorry, I motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You got it, Adam.
Okay. So should I work with you, Trish, on scanning and sending copies back and forth?
Sure thing. Soon as he signed it, I'll go ahead and forward it over to your email.
Okay. Thank you. Was, was there any input on areas of emphasis or concerns you had for us to focus on this year?
I don't have anything right now.
Obviously we've been fighting with COVID, so we haven't really had time to think about some of these other things. We can get back to you on that, can't we?
Yeah, very, very understandable. And, and I mean, you have my email and contact information. So if you hear any concerns from citizens throughout the year, you can reach out at any point.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Adam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on then. Govens administration, copier, lease renewal.
The, the copier printer that we have, I'm talking, I'm muffled. The copier printer that we have here in the administration office is on a five year lease. That lease is over. So they did present us with a new machine with a new lease that is actually going to save us $21 per month. Plus, we currently pay seven cents per color copy. It would knock it down to one cent. So they do need the lease signed. They will order the new one and wait until the new one has arrived before taking the other one. So basically we'd be signing up for an additional five year lease with a 21 per month dollar discount.
Do they have in their lease, I can't remember from last time, let's see, what, what is their lease agreement as far as maintenance? How does that work in, is this full coverage?
They do ink and also full coverage on the actual machine for five years. And we get X amount of ink for free within that package.
For the five years?
For the five years.
And I believe our only option is either you do the lease or you purchase one. And the last time we did it, we purchased some and then had issues with maintenance and ink and everything else.
That's why I asked.
And so I think we're probably a whole lot better off to just do this.
And I did, in that conversation, talk them into at least considering helping taking over the maintenance of the three machines that we have issues with that were purchased outside of this model. Yes, that would, and Jane, we're having quite a few problems with those machines. So Govan is considering and going to give us an estimate to adding those three machines, but I haven't heard back yet.
That's a separate issue.
Correct.
Right. I don't have, I don't have problems. I think, I think it makes sense. We reduce it. We got full coverage. My, my concern with leasing is always the warranty on the machines because it's a key thing. If it's 60 months where the warranty is.
They do a very good job.
Well, I make a motion. We go and take a look, prove this contract is written. So we have a motion to approve the contract. We have a second. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, the next item is egg building exemption form approval.
And that has been, the proposed changes have been sent out. They've been reviewed. Randy looked at them, said he didn't have a problem with them. I don't know what else needs to be done other than approving them. And I would move that we approve them.
Second on that, second. Okay, discussion? I'm going to reread this. The only comment I have is I received a complaint about the conversion of an egg building taking place right now. And possible use of property, maybe land use and building issues. Haven't had a chance to verify it. So I haven't brought it to Randy Ward, to Dixie. But if it's, as it's been explained to me, it'll be of serious concern, but I don't think there's anything in here that would affect that in terms of if they changed the years and haven't followed the procedures. Looking for that one clause of building.
Is it that one in bold that you're looking for?
What I'm looking for is the, that's exactly what I'm looking for. So, yeah. So that was my only comment. We've got a motion. A second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay. Anything else on the general business administrative items before we move on? There ain't none. Tony, come talk to us.
All right. It's going to get exciting now.
I'm not sure. I'm going to take a little statement. Can we strike that?
If you're into paperwork and you really like charts, it's about to get exciting.
Ooh.
So her front page here, this guy. What we've got is the overview, just to make my brain a little, to make it make sense in my brain. I did include the Rio Grande County COVID response grants that aren't necessarily attached to public health. But since my attention will be split among these three categories, this is kind of what I gave you. So in orange, you've got budgeted public health grants. Those are our regular grants that have already been budgeted into our actual county budget. Public health COVID-19 response grants in green, those are POs or grant agreements that we've received from the state as part of the COVID response. The red that you see there, those are not through public health. Those are, one that you've been discussing quite a bit, the CVRF grant. And then two others that Tricia just passed through to me to, for us to look at and kind of discuss. Though we've not gone anywhere with them. Just so you know, as we go further down, you'll see that those two have fewer, have less information than the others. And that's why we, we don't even know if we want to consider them. They're just there for us to, to look at. So John, I'm hopeful that this is kind of what you've been asking for, for the allowable uses on the grants. We have each of the grants that I just mentioned, those categories, they're listed out here under the name. And then we've got the dates that those are applicable, start and end dates. You've got the total award amount, that 11 on resilient community programs, that was just, ignore that. That's not true. We don't have one for potentially $11. So then what we've got in our categories of allowable uses for the spending, staff is going to be our regular budgeted staff activities. So if it was already included as an activity that we were going to do in the budget that we were presented for this year, it's going to go in that category. COVID-19 staff response is just as it sounds. If we have significantly changed someone's duties or we're bringing someone on to help with the COVID response, they will go in that category. So those few allowable grants.
So the color coding, the greens and the reds, they relate to the colors?
Green is yes, red is a no, unallowable uses.
Okay, no, okay.
Yeah. So the supplies and operating, just like with staff, that category is already budgeted, has already been included. So if it's already been budgeted, we cannot use, for instance, we can't use the public health environment phase one grant. Now, we do have a category for supplies and operating that is COVID specific. And for those, it's going to be the same as the staffing. If it is something that is a significant change or it goes above and beyond what we have budgeted previously and relates to COVID, we can, we can spend in that category. Municipality pastor is quite clear. Business grants is very clear. The capital and facilities. I also included the resilient community program, which is a GO-CO grant on there. And that would be, you just need to be very clear that that's not for a building. Those are projects that are green space and open space. So there is still a capital project, but they're not to be used to help with a testing site or anything like that.
And this is CDBG under the cares or after, under the COVID response type ones?
Yes, it's a portion of that, just like we're using cares for similar things.
So is everything below the PHP phase one COVID related?
That is also COVID related.
Okay, then.
Yes.
Everything below the RHC then? Everything below the RHC then?
Yes.
Is, on this list is COVID related?
Okay, so, um, all of this isn't related to COVID, this is correct.
So, um, as John said, the PHGP phase one CARES Act, ELC, CVRF, CBD, CBBG, resilient communities, and then the HCC COVID fund. Those are all specific to COVID response, so anything you spend in those grants or in those POs does have to tie back to COVID response.
So under the HCC, it says facilities are allowed. That's a green line there?
Um, not for the HCC.
Oh, that's just a block, okay, resilient community program.
Yeah, we haven't gotten our statement of work yet for the HCC, they're working on it right now. So, as the state gets that through, they'll send it to Cynthia and she'll send it along to us to say what's allowable for that additional twenty five thousand that wasn't budgeted originally.
Okay, and that was twenty five thousand?
My guess is that's gonna be supplies and staff that are COVID related, just like the rest of them, but like I said, we don't have that actual information yet.
Then the E, okay, ELC is three hundred and thirty one thousand?
Yes.
That's the pot that if we support the original, they're suggesting that we dip into that one?
Potentially, um, yeah, that is, that's one of their suggestions. We would be able to do that partnership through any of those top three COVID response ones, the PHGP CARES and ELC.
Okay, and what does PHGP stand for? I assume it's public health emergency preparedness?
Same category. It is one of our emergency response brands. And their description for that on the actual PO that we have, so regardless of what they're calling it, their description is a COVID nineteen for rear grand county public health. So it's COVID spending, and we do have details for that as well, but it's emergency response.
Okay, and then the CARES Act was forty one thousand, we had this conversation, this is the one I signed the other day, or you signed for me? You'd receive twenty thousand plus of it and receive the rest?
If we haven't received it yet, it's on the way.
Yeah. And that money can be used for staffing? For supplies? Is that like masks and those kinds of stuff?
So we can do masks, we can do cleaning supplies, if we needed additional office supplies to support the staff who are working on COVID response, we could do that, yeah.
And you have a pretty good handle on what you need and how you'd like to spend that money, I assume, going forward?
Uh, we have some of the planning done, um, there are some that need to be spent before others, so that's gonna be a consideration in this. Kind of catching up and getting those immediate needs met, and definitely knocking through some of the, the, the file that we have current expenses we've already done.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have questions on this?
Oh, um, I had somebody from a school the other day ask me if there was any of the CARES Act funding that would be able to go to schools in any way, shape, or form? Is there, or do they have their own set of funding from the same?
So they do have CARES Act funding that's specific to the schools, and that's, the information on that has been released to them already. We have a couple of these that do include, um, we could support schools, if that's the direction we decided to go. And we have that funding available. I haven't heard from anybody, um, really what they want to focus on is technology to allow the schools to, um, do remote learning, and then also, uh, materials or supplies that would be required to meet the guidelines that have been released by CDE and CDPHG for reopening schools.
And do you know which grants they are, or which amount of?
So there's nothing set aside specifically
Okay.
for schools.
But which ones we could use for that?
Could, um, I believe CVRF had some information that we could be helpful with schools. And then we also can use, not the ELC, but I believe it's the CARES Act, that we could use some portion of that funding. If there were a specific request, yeah, and if we're not gonna change any lives, um, or be the, be the element that allows a school to reopen, but if there were a specific request in the school, it is really COVID is too much for us, and we, we need this, just help us with this, we could definitely, um, consider that kind of request.
There was funding though available under that CARES Act facility for schools, so there's separate tranches.
Yeah. They do have some.
Thank you.
Operating the schools.
Yes. This is very helpful, thank you.
Okay, so that was actually the fun part for y'all.
Now's the not as much fun part?
So when, um, I asked for this meeting and for the length of this meeting, part of my goal is that I feel like we've spent quite a bit of time saying what is public health and what are you all actually required to do? And honestly, my preference would be to answer that question as fully and thoroughly as possible, so that we can meet in the future about things that we're going to do and problems we're gonna take on. Um, so, I am ready to dive in unless y'all have some specific requests or questions about the grants that we hold that you would want to attack first.
Well, what do you have next on, well, this is organization conversation, so I guess this is the time and place for, uh
If you'd like to move that around and take care of the contracts first, I don't know.
Are the contracts pretty easy?
Yeah, so the
Can we get those little rocks out of the way?
Sure. Um, Ryan was looking over, I don't know if they're in order there, but he was looking over the, um, staff contracts for us, I don't know if you have something you'd like to see changed on there?
So substantively, I have no immediate concerns about the contracts. Except that I think there are a number of technical issues that need to be addressed in, uh, almost all of the contracts. And I can take them one at a time, um, on the regional health connector contract. Um, the county rep is identified as Paul Wertz in the email. Um, for P words at Rio Grande County is provided, so I think we need to make that correction.
We did have that noted in the last one, and they approved it with that change.
Okay, um, so that was the one concern I had identified there, there was the coordinator agreement. That, let me pull it up on my end, so I can show identifying the SLB prevention coordinator agreement. My copy shows that there is a term beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, the very first paragraph. That obviously needs to be corrected to reflect twenty twenty. Um, this contract also refers to attachment one. Attachment one does appear, sorry, there is a portion included in this that has deliverables, but it's not identified as attachment one.
Okay.
Attachment two is identified, but I think we need to make sure that we, because it's referred to as attachment one, that we call this attachment one. And be my advice on that. Um, substantively, again, I don't have concerns about what's in there, but, uh, just that technical concern about the term and the identifying the attachment. On the step contracts, or the Alamosa step contract, there's a reference to a scope of work. As an attachment, there's not a scope of work provided, so I haven't been able to review a scope of work on any of the step contracts, and I'm not sure if that's a typo or a step of work. Sorry, scope of work is included elsewhere, but it isn't specifically attached to the contract.
Yeah, so we'll take that off of the Alamosa one, and the, the language was the same in that attachment as it was in the contract with the state.
Okay, same is true of the Conales contract, there's a reference to the scope of work, but not attached.
Okay.
Uh, on the Conales contract, again, substantively, I'm fine with it, the commencement date I think reflects commencement of July first, two thousand and nineteen, under paragraph D. So, let me go to Conales, make sure I'm under paragraph D, contract shall be effective from July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So I think we need to update that, same is true of the Costa contract. And then I did just receive the HCC contract this morning. Haven't had an opportunity to fully review the HCC contract, but again, I identified in that HCC contract as an initial matter, um, the term of that contract is, I think reflected a July twenty eighteen date, and needs to find where Are you sure there was a twenty eighteen date? Sorry, number two, Roman numeral two, the term of this agreement shall commence July first, twenty nineteen. So that needs to be corrected, but, um, my disclaimer on this contract is I just haven't had a chance to look through all of the attachments.
Okay.
What's it, what, when do we have to have this approved?
Um, I am not gonna be at your meeting next Wednesday, but I could send someone, or maybe Trish would do that for me, if you wanted to look at the HCC contract for next Wednesday.
Is there a, isn't there an HCC meeting, what we kind of waiting on that?
So there was one yesterday, and there's another specifically for this contract tomorrow.
Um I think that's their regular meeting, cause they discussed the contract yesterday.
Something, okay, so they jumped ahead.
Yeah, so they did discuss this contract, and what they came to was the number that you'll see, I don't have it in front of me, but in your emails that I sent to you. I think it was fifty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty for the wage that is actually gonna be her contract. And what they did was they took out eight thousand, which would take her up to the same amount she was making last year, and they've asked to move that to travel and operating. So she can invoice it against it, for her.
For her, so that helps her tax wise.
So it would help her with the taxes, so she can still invoice us against that line, but it's not included in her contract anymore, and they had that was kind of the terms that they came to yesterday, and I, she's the one I was texting when you guys were in your meeting, and she's, um she's agreed to those terms, she said she'll sign for that, uh, and then we'll revisit next year.
So I guess we need to see this, and then before we vote on it.
Yeah, so I think it would be great if we could do it, if you guys could do that next Wednesday. If you have any comments, I can change it before then, and we can get that through to Trish, and then I would ask that you, as the board of health, would approve for John to sign these contracts with these amendments. So I'll bring them up later today with these changes on them, they're not signed by the other parties yet. So we could just bring those up with these changes and be clear on it.
You're talking about the step contract in the first?
It's got the regional health connector and the
Is that, uh, what's your regional health connector?
That's Dee, um, and she is doing
That's who, that's her?
Dee Kessler.
Okay.
Yeah, and her, she, she's kind of a coordinator for different health agencies, attending all the meetings, reporting back to all of the agencies about what's available.
And Ryan, would you be comfortable with us approving these, uh, the step contracts contingent upon the changes that you?
Contingent upon the corrections that I identified, yes.
Okay, I'll, I will move that we approve those contingent upon the changes given.
For the step contract?
Step contract, yes. And then on the, um, healthcare coalition, wait until Ryan has a chance to review.
The motion is to approve, uh, the revised step contracts. Uh, I can sign them after the revisions, I mean, what, what are you looking at in time on that?
As soon as we're done with this, I'll run down and get them, so I can bring them back up.
Okay, and Ryan, do you wanna look at those, or do, what do I need to look at on that?
It'd be, it'd be nice if I could look at them, just to make sure that it supports with, uh, the recommendations that I made, and doesn't put the full burden on you or Tony to make sure we got all of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you'll get them to him, and he'll get them to me, and once he's okay with it, I'll sign them. Okay, we have, well, we will have a motion, we have a second, a motion is second, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we got the step contracts taken care of, let's go back to the connector, this is, okay.
That one you approved with the change already, so we wouldn't need to do that one.
That one's already been approved? Has it been signed?
Yes.
The connector is attached to the step contract.
Okay.
The healthcare coalition is the one that we're going to.
And healthcare coalition, we're gonna move to next week's agenda then.
Yeah, so the regional health connector, you've already done, healthcare coalition, we're doing next week. Step has four counties, and it has a coordinator. So if those four counties and the coordinator were included in your previous motion, then that's fine, if not, we need to make a separate motion for the coordinator.
It was not included specifically.
Okay, so I would move that we approve all four counties and the coordinator attached to the step program and contract. Did that?
Motion, and a second, uh, question, the coordinator, is, are we fiscal agents for the step contractors?
We are, yes.
Okay, and so the coordinator would be?
She's the regional position.
And who is that right now?
Kristy Hillis.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, cares. All right, that take care of the small items, and you're ready to give us the full inch of order.
Does for me, um, I would also like to request, just so you guys know ahead of time, before we get too far. I'd like to discuss personnel down to their specific salary level, so if I could, um, jump on the executive session today, or if we could schedule another, that's not next Wednesday, I would appreciate that.
Do those individuals have notice of today's executive session?
They do know that it's here, um, and that I was going to present information if I could.
Okay, and have any of them expressed the desire to have that in an open meeting?
They have not.
Do they know about the ability to have it in an open meeting?
We did talk about them coming up, but I don't, I haven't shown them like any sunshine laws or anything.
Are we doing a work session? We can't do it in a work session, can we?
We can discuss it in an executive session, but I would think that we would just wanna make sure that they know they have a right to have it in an open meeting.
We don't have a work session today.
No, I mean, we're Monday.
Monday we have one, however, uh, Will Smith and Dayton is coming in.
Okay, so that would be a conflict, you're not available Wednesday, so, uh, I don't know how full our executive session today is gonna be. Potentially could turn into a longer meeting, I don't know. Ryan, you got a feel for it?
Um, I think you're probably right, but I don't think, I'd, I guess, I'd ask Tony how long she anticipates those salary discussions taking. And then it seems like it would be easy enough to just ask them, you know, are you comfortable with us having this? And do you know that you can have it in an open meeting if you'd like, and then we can proceed, I don't wanna get too bogged down in formalities.
Okay, yeah, I think there are only three who we're discussing any kind of change for. So if we, um, even if I can take just a minute break during this, you can, I can do that.
Now, I assume you, you all have an idea of what the conversation is, whatever request might be out there, whatever.
For the salaries?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and are these COVID related at all?
Some.
Okay, so there's potential for funding, but it may only last as long as the COVID funds are available.
Correct.
So we'd need a little, bring, bring us your information at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, then if that's the case, if you'll check with them, and then we can set aside some time during the executive session for that. It'll be in and out, since it's executive, you guys will come in through the timer. All right, okay, now, do you have anything else before you get down to the big stuff?
I don't think so.
All right.
Um, so I'm just gonna be going through the contracts that we do have, and our allowable spending, and kind of where we are with these different grants, I've looked through everything that we have, so we should not have any additional contracts, grants, or obligations. Um, that's a shit. So I try to keep them basically in order, what you've got here is our overview of the grant amounts that have been budgeted, so this is not COVID response fund. That's gonna show you the personal services, supplies and operating contractual indirect for all of these. You'll notice on immunizations that I have put in a note, this is gonna be increased to forty eight thousand, three hundred and thirty one in, um, any time now.
Which one's that?
That's for immunizations, that is our budgeted immunization award, they're increasing that with the anticipation that there is going to be, um, and a significant increase in flu vaccinations and um, some of the vaccinations for use because of concerns around COVID. So they're trying to make sure that we're, we're covered for that.
But that doesn't include COVID specific immunizations?
No, I would anticipate that as a vaccine becomes available, we will see additional funding to support getting that out. Um, but this does offer a buffer, so that we have that additional, potentially have a person or someone who's dedicated to this, who's already familiar with our systems and how we operate, and can come in and assist with that distribution when it becomes available. Okay, so a big one, we're starting with communities that care. This year, we have got one hundred and sixty one thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars. Okay, so a big one, we're starting with communities that care. This year we have got one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars in that. This is a direct contract between us and the state. We have a work plan in that that has lasted actually for the entire life of this contract. So as you guys are aware, we break down the contracts into single years because that's what we're required to do. But often we'll have a renewable contract, so for instance, CTC has been, uh, five years. I believe, I think it was five and not three, has been a five-year contract where it is renewed every year. But our work plan has gone from the very beginning of that contract all the way through the end of this year. To the end of this fiscal year twenty-one, it's going to be the expiration of this contract and we're going to have to rewrite that grant coming up here.
Okay, and was that an August thirty-first on that?
Most of ours are June thirtieth, they're the.
But this one is still running.
It is.
So when's it, when's it drop in?
So it'll be done at the end of June next year.
Oh, so this is still running through June of next year?
It is.
Okay.
So this one we still have, but that contract, just so that we're able to, whoever wins the award is going to be able to just hop right back into work. The application will be in the fall, we'll find out in the winter who's been awarded and then work can begin immediately for those who receive the award.
And what does communities that care do?
Okay, so we are working to reduce youth substance abuse and use. That is the main priority for communities that care. And that's been broken down into different, um, actual deliverables. So this is a state effort to accomplish these goals and Communities That Care is actually a system that was created in Washington and.
State.
It has been state. And it has been used all across the world. Um, and it has been shown to be, be very successful in bringing a coalition of interested parties together. To create plans, seek out funding and make a system where their community will be strong enough to actually accomplish the goal of reducing substance use and abuse for youth. And in that we're including tobacco, we're including drugs, we're including prescription use, we're including, um, alcohol. That's all within the goals of this organization.
But this, or, this basically is, if I heard you correctly, is effectively funds meetings where they get together and come up with a plan and seek future funding for those plans.
That is.
These are not providing direct benefits necessarily.
That's part of it. So what happened as the system was moved on, has moved on, is that they found that coalitions are successful when they're able to have little wins. And they're able to actually accomplish something in their community. So if you sit people down in a group and you tell them we're going to have five years of talking about what we're going to do five years from now, they're not going to be successful. So some of the things that we've actually been able to do with this funding are the youth interns that we have down in public health. That's one program that you've heard quite a bit about, um, that gives youth a healthy alternative to substance use and other destructive and risky behaviors.
That you, the interns are provided with an alternative?
That those two specifically are provided with that alternative. It also involves youth within the coalition itself, so that shows them that they're trusted and stable adults around them who support. Their activities and who are working toward creating a better community for them. So all of the youth who are involved in CTC get to see that we're, we're not alone, adults aren't all that different from us. They get to come together and see that there is a system that they can engage in and make change.
So that whenever Nancy Molyneux brought up the kids who were trying to do suicide prevention or something like that program?
When we were discussing Sharp, we had three of our youth here and they, I, I would say that they did a wonderful job expressing themselves and with no preparation. That was just them. Um, so they're given opportunities to do things like that. They're taken to city council meetings, to county commissioner meetings. So that they can express their feelings here and they can make sure that the direction CTC is taking isn't just adult-led. It's also influenced by the youth themselves. They've also hosted things like the, um, Youth Nights at the Perks. Uh, there have been photo shows, there have been, um, the mural that's on the restroom at the park in Del Norte. Uh, the fourth grade presentations where they will go to city councils and local county commissioners and they'll, um, let you know. Why you need to make better choices and why drug use is not a great idea for your success in the future. Um, we do have attendance at, um, things like the ASU wing symposium and we'll have youth go along with that. So really providing a direct service is an important part of what CTC does. Because it's going to keep the youth engaged and it's going to keep the adults engaged, because we're not a lot better than teenagers. If you tell us that we're just going to sit and listen to somebody lecture for a couple hours, sorry, we're not going to like it. So that's a big part of what we're doing. Um, Nancy herself, she's our coordinator for this program. She has made it a priority to talk about things like, um, equity and positive youth development for the youth. So that has been very important in her, so she's brought us more opportunities, she's brought trainings to the area, she's coordinated with other agencies to provide trainings. So that's all through CTC. Um, what we're required to do, we could do meetings if we wanted to and that was all we were going to do. But it would be really difficult and I don't think we'd win the award next time. I think we need to, we need to keep doing what we're doing with the outreach and possibly even increase that. Um.
So you send interns up here to tell me to quit smoking?
Absolutely. Is that what you need? Because we can do that.
Is, uh, their coordination with social services and their child welfare unit on this communities that care?
So social services, the main coordination that we've had is actually inviting people to the coalition and we've been successful off and on. But, um, it is one of the priorities is to have that relationship.
Okay.
And have a personal.
Yeah, I just know that they've got a number of youth who are engaged in substance use and, um, could see that there would be crossover between that population that might be served by both this grant and social services.
Yeah, and we would love to do more and we can, we can create new coalitions and new groups as the need arises. And that's one thing that's very nice about CTC is we do have some flexibility to respond to upcoming issues. Um, one area, we have worked with the schools previously and we try to continue working with the schools. To ensure that we can do groups within the school or we can provide assistance or support when something does come up and that's a strong tool for CTC. So we'll keep working on that. Um, within the schools, we are also working with the Healthy Kids Colorado data. The, that is a survey that's done within the school and it tracks kind of our local level of use of substances, alcohol and other risky behaviors. That data is shared with the coalition. It's not shared publicly. We actually have a data agreement with the schools that allows the coalition to utilize that data in planning. Um, but because of the size of our schools, it's not released publicly because it can actually be identified, the information. So, um, that's part of, one of our primary activities for CTC. The meetings, the primary activity for that is that it must include key stakeholders and that's kind of what Ryan was talking about. If we don't have social services in the room for those meetings, then that needs to become a priority for us. Because they're going to have information that we need and hopefully we're going to provide services that they can utilize. Um, that also includes government, it includes religion, um, law enforcement. There, there, there are many people who are on the list that Nancy has got to continually approach to come to these meetings. Um, and our expectation is that when we have reached our goals, those people will be fully engaged in these meetings and in the process. Then we are required to create an action plan. And that's a plan that's created by the group, it's not created by Rio Grande County Public Health. And that is a priority, that the group comes together and creates a plan that is meant to last well beyond the funding that's available for this group. So that's part of the goal is that they seek out additional funding to make sure that this can keep going and that their identified priorities continue. Um. Positive youth development is a. Has been adopted by the state as an approach to working with youth age nine to twenty-five. We've had local trainings, we will have more trainings. I think anyone who's working with youth definitely wants to engage in those and most of the people, um, in our. All of our after-school programs in the county have done this, some of our schools have done this. And some of the youth who are involved in our GPP have made it a priority that they would like to be trained as trainers in PID. So that they can go to the schools and convince their teachers to do the training. They are bought in, they want to do it, they want to see more people using it. Um, there is also training specific to youth, so that the youth can be trained in that and then they can go on and they can provide the training to groups of youth around the community. And that's really exciting and it's everything that we can do to provide or support their agency. We want to do that. They need to lead this process.
That is under Communities That Care.
Yep, all of this is Communities That Care. So ultimately the goal is to reduce negative health outcomes in Colorado youth. So we have to do this through tracking of the Healthy Kids data. We do this through tracking, um, attendance and engagement at our meetings. And engagement otherwise, we also do local advertisements, um, and work with the local media. One of the work groups within CTC is actually the press group, so they'll work together to, to make sure that, um, everybody knows what's going on and we do need to do better. But we're, we're moving along, we're trying to get that going. So this coordinator will meet twice a month with the state program manager for CTC. With our state program manager for CTC, they, um, will troubleshoot and they'll make plans and they'll try and make sure that we are meeting our contractual deliverables. And that we have as much creativity and flexibility as possible to meet any upcoming issues. Our budget on this includes almost every staff member in public health. And that is because. It is a commitment to ensure that we're all engaged with this and aware of what's going on in it. What you'll see is that we were not all, especially significantly represented in the budget. So for instance, public health nurse one has just over a thousand dollars in this. So we don't expect people to dedicate most of their time to this, but we do expect that people are going to be available and involved. In the CTC process to be able to answer questions, to be able to know where we are in the process and just to make sure that it, it does keep going, no matter who we have on staff.
How do you measure the effective mission program?
So there are a few. Um, one is the attendance of the meetings and the engagement. We also have deliverable activities that can be measured such as, um, turning in action plans and reports to the state. So those, those are our requirements to actually get the report together and completed by the, um, community and then that gets turned in. And we also use that Healthy Kids data to see if we have had any measurable impact in the actual data, in the amount of use. And it also helps us to plan and prepare for the next step.
Do we have any of those numbers? No?
I don't. I don't have any of that on me. Um, for, as far as our deliverables, we have been able to connect with the program manager and make sure that anything that we are behind on, we're getting. Email approval that this is the reason we're behind and we're, we're catching up on that to make sure that our, our deliverables are covered. Um, that had been an issue in the past, that we didn't have that communication. It was kind of just a, hey, we're not going to be able to do this because. These people didn't show up and, okay, that sounds great. That's not going to work. We need that actually on paper. So that's actually at the state level, they're working on that and we're also working on that in our office to make sure.
I guess, one of my concerns in all these programs is the deliverables don't necessarily translate to direct benefit to the community. So we meet terms of the grant, satisfy the granting party, but we can't show that it actually provided benefit other than creating jobs.
So that's a great benefit.
Well.
Aside from that.
Aside from that.
Um, we are also, these deliverables have been selected and this program has been selected because there is considerable evidence and research that shows that Communities That Care is successful. And it also shows that Communities That Care is slowly successful because there is not an immediate program. There's nothing, if there was something better. That we could come in and offer it and we know that there will be no kids in our community drinking next year, that's what we'd offer.
Does it, does it compete with other non-government programs, Boy Scouts, uh? Aviation programs, things of that nature, FFA, 4H.
As far as reducing substances and risky behavior?
I mean, we have, we have several programs on there at the same time.
Yeah.
That obviously kind of accomplishes the same thing we're talking about here. So are we overlapping or are we reaching a different group?
Uh, yes, and so we are hopeful that we can engage the same youth who are active in other areas. We definitely want to include anyone who's interested in this. What we've found is that the youth who are especially interested, generally they have some impact in their life, they have. A story, they have a connection to this issue that makes it especially important for them to put the time in to do this. Um, a lot of CTC is that those adults who have the power at this point come together to listen to the youth and they come together to make plans that are youth-focused. So that definitely doesn't affect attendance or participation in other, um, activities. And our GPP is absolutely supportive of all of the other activities. We have, um, 4H membership on our committee. And we are open to membership from, anyone else actually having community input is, is vital to the success of this program. So they're all welcome at the table and should come in and help us make decisions. The point of having a coalition is to bring a group of people together who will accomplish a goal that would not be possible as one individual or one individual organization. If we're not able to have that wider view, we should not be coming together as a coalition. It's a waste of time. So our goal is to take on this huge problem that can't be tackled at a smaller level. So I don't believe that we interfere with any other activity. Um. So does anyone have any other questions about CTC or what we're trying to do there?
Yeah.
Do you feel like you understand what CTC is about?
I thought that was very complete, thank you.
Okay.
Uh. I'm trying to match the problem with the solution in my mind. I'm not, I'm not supposed to, I'm just trying to figure out the amount of money and effort and staff personnel. Because we're not in the business of making jobs in county, obviously. Uh, nice that that's a side benefit. You know, if we benefit ten kids, uh, three kids, how many kids are actually?
What? All right.
This is a, a community level program. So for instance, the priorities that have been chosen here are, um, community attachment.
What's that mean?
Which is great. So research shows that youth who feel an attachment to their community and feel that their community cares about them are less likely to engage in these risky behaviors. So some of the efforts that we do there are introducing youth when we can to boards and commissions and coalitions of adults. We, um, provide opportunities for youth and adults to come together and spend time together. We try and connect them to local businesses and local activities. So if there is a music night at the park, that's a great opportunity for CTC to be supported and try and encourage our youth to go there and connect. With the community in that way. Our goal is to make sure that the youth know that the community cares about them and to provide opportunities for the community to demonstrate that they care. Because a lot of us as adults, we don't know what we can do to make life better or easier for youth, especially youth with issues going on that we can't face ourselves.
So two, two little things, how does this go beyond what like HBCC or any of the others actually reach out to? How far, how much deeper does this go in the community?
So I would say it goes wider.
Wider?
Is what it is. So, um, Monovista Kids Connection and HBCC, they both have programs that are working towards bringing youth nine to twenty-five into. Their programs and providing supports on that individual level. Our GPP is focused on creating a community where the adults are working along with youth to address these very large problems. So Monovista Kids Connection is going to give you an opportunity as a sixteen-year-old to support a group of kindergarteners who are doing a, a drawing activity. Which is great, that's an alternate activity. Which is great, that's an alternate activity that is really widening your horizons, it's giving you an opportunity to work with youth and you're learning. Uh your own skills, all that stuff is great. Our GPP is gonna come together and they're going to find funding that'll provide more of these opportunities, they're gonna come together and provide. Um. Support from the community, so the schools are gonna be invited into that conversation. So we can say what we've found is that the youth who work with younger youth are demonstrating that they are more engaged in the community, great. How do we provide more of these opportunities? So it's bringing those adults together with you to make decisions. On a community wide level that will then encourage them on an individual level to be able to avoid those risks.
The other question I had was, so I know this is Nancy's her her game, so. It gets time to replace the two we just had, how do we go about choosing who those two are, not us, but how does? See those people chosen?
I feel like I should know what you're telling, youth, the interns. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know whether to use their names, it's Max and Kayla.
Yes, so um right now Nancy is trying to reach out personally and make those connections. In our office, we're having conversations about what it means to have interns in and who's going to support them and what does it look like to actually support them?
Do they have a regular interview process to go through, I mean like the two we just had? Great kids, I I've known Max for, you know, his high school career and stuff, good kid, and I didn't know Kayla that well, but I did know Max. And so when you get somebody involved in like that, you know that he's gonna go somewhere, do something there and then he picks up through his life, you know. I just wondered what that process was.
Well, and I think the, one of the potential interns is one that gave incredibly impressive speech last year.
Yeah, I'm not sure who she's talking to actually. But it might be.
But yes, you, yeah, all three of you were extremely impressed with them.
So we don't have a, we don't have a process like that in place right now, but I would like to have a process. Because we are bringing them on as staff, I think it's important that we treat them the same.
Well, two, two things, they're representing River Grande County for one. So they need to have, there needs to be some kind of buy-in in the two interview or something, and then the second thing is I I I was just curious about like. What they have to, they have to have a grade point average, do they have to be an athlete, do they have to have any, you know, is there any particularly that? Just for my.
So the, the goal is that we would have youth who are interested in prevention, so. I wouldn't wanna set any grade pointy or any other academic or or meritous mark that they have to meet to qualify for this. Because we want any kiddo who we can support and we can show that you are valuable here and. We actually give them tasks to do to demonstrate to them that they are valuable, that they can accomplish things.
That was, that's what I was gonna my question because I know Max. And I know what he went through and kinda kitty is, and what he's gonna be, I know him pretty well. So if if you interview and you find out that you have somebody that maybe needs that extra little help, is that the kid we need to get?
I believe so, yes.
Alright, thanks.
That should be our goal. So um we're in the middle of talking about the interns and how to bring on the newest group, the couple of interns. Um so that's, that's a starting conversation that we're having right now and I I'll take those notes back as we finish our conversation.
Anything else, is that the CTC brief?
That's CTC.
Okay.
And then we have got. Look at my notes and not try and guess things, EPR.
Stands for?
Emergency Preparedness Response. This is one of our regularly budgeted grants, this is another one through CDPHE. Our staffing for this.
There's another one through, I'm sorry, there's another one through what?
CDPHE.
CDPHE, okay.
Our staffing for this is largely Diane. Our secondary nurse are on this grant is fairly minimal, but it's there for for backup and support. And then the director has previously been budgeted for a a fairly small portion of time. On this to support, do the paperwork, um help with the deliverables. So our. This one actually, I think you would like to copy this page and then I can give you one, cause it has definitions for EPR and the activities that we're doing in there. Um EPR for example is defined in there. Deliverables list for this one is in a statement of work similar to what we have for CTC. We, our goal, our primary goal in this program is to increase capacity for preparedness response and recovery in Colorado and that is. Discussing things like a pandemic, a fire, these are the public health professionals who will come together to address any of those disasters. And our training to be able to do that, and I will say that this training has been incredibly helpful. Diane, more than the rest of us, is the person who immediately knew, well guys, we can meet, but we've gotta. Have this form ready and we need to sign in for this process and she was doing her two fourteen before the rest of us knew what two fourteen's were. Um because she has devoted a considerable amount of time into training for this kind of situation. So she is definitely the, the backbone of our response and ensuring that we. Are reporting what we need to report and we are following our processes that have been established. So.
Well, how does that interface with um our emergency managers?
So they work with the emergency managers, but just like behavioral health and medical. There are different departments that come together in the emergency response, so this is planning specifically for the public health response to a disaster.
Okay, you mentioned uh fires, floods, earthquakes, whatever, what's public health role in that?
So our role is much more minimal in the rest of the disasters, it is actually things like. Um if there is a fire near a long, long-term care facility. We will have plans in place on helping them to relocate if there is. Um an individual with an oxygen issue will be contacted for that. And occasionally we'll be involved in rehousing or feeding parts of the program, but those are. Primarily the responsibility of another agency, another part of this response, public health's main. Um disaster, what we have to be ready for is exactly what we're in right now.
Okay, so when we don't have what we're in right now. During the uh gas outage in Delaware, the emergency manager was the one that was working with the nursing house crew, looked to relocate the residents. Okay, so we already have that covered.
So we have a plan in place, that's what this planning portion is. Is that we're working constantly with the partners to ensure that we're having these conversations.
Okay, so how much of this is, we have EPR money, we understand the pandemic and the direct public health, let's say water contamination or something like that. When we're looking at natural disasters, uh utility outages, those types of things. It seems to me that that should be the purview of the emergency management side.
Okay.
But now we're, I mean, it's not a great deal of money, but what I've observed during the pandemic was. Who's responsible for what and where are the lines, we even had that during the gas outage, where public health tried to get involved.
So I believe there was a PIO question in that which was.
Well, there was, it actually was a little bit more involved in that and it just, it was a little bit of a power struggle. And I go, sometimes we need to know where our fence is. And the way I see these structured, oftentimes they tear the fences down and we're all in the herd together and it's hard to figure out who's supposed to do what. It's not a curse from our public health department, it's about the system and it's what I see happening at the regional level, for instance, and there's this jockeying for power. Okay, and it creates conflict for those, let's just use the emergency managers, for example. They probably have to do something every year, have to, there's a fire, there's a flood, there's whatever, they generally have some emergency to respond to. And they have a structure for doing it, whenever we had the pandemic. They got shoved off to the side, basically, just do what we tell you, this is a report I got back. We're, we're in charge and I go, okay, this is a one-off. Every twenty-year event, ten-year event, something like that, but they start shoving aside. The people that were already in place, they handle certain parts of it, pandemic side, the public health side's clear, but it got, the lines got crossed. And it caused a lot of hard feelings and a lot of that stuff doesn't make the public that comes to us. And so when I see something like this that's kind of vague edges, I get a little concerned. That there's not a bright line there that says this is, this is exactly what we're responsible for. And we don't have a public health officer asserting a public health emergency because there's a flood. It's not a public health emergency, it's, it's a public safety emergency and we have public safety people for that.
So the, the main, the, the biggest training, the first training that you're gonna do um for the EPR grant. Anyone who's involved in it is actually the incident command training, which theoretically addresses kind of what you're talking about. Is that an incident command structure is put in place and everyone knows what their parts are within that. So Diane has been putting a lot of time into learning about the planning and the operations sections of the incident command. So she can respond to those and as an incident command is assigned, so the incident commander is assigned. They will generally utilize people across the different response areas who have training and are prepared to respond in a certain. Capacity.
So under what circumstances would the public health entity provide the IC commander?
So in our county, that was initiated with the pandemic, um it would not likely be issued with a fire. What often comes into play is who has the IC experience. And then can actually support the process all the way.
One of the things that happened, I don't believe you were here then last, you weren't working for us last spring, were you? During the High River, the two rivers event, and the public health director took it upon her themselves. Just, so they were gonna come set up an emergency operations center. Outside their, outside their scope of authority, way outside, and they were gonna do it despite the county commissioners. Or anybody else, sure, whomever was involved. A solution looking for a problem. And uh I know some of that's personalities, but sometimes when things aren't clearly defined. Personalities start to take over, fill the void, what they perceive to be the void. We have it going on with economic development, I hear two or three different entities that have nothing to do with economic development. Saying, well, we need to hire somebody to do economic development after the pandemic, it's not your job, we've got other people for that. And so people just start assuming responsibilities once their role has basically been taken care of, they've done their part. Their, their problem has been solved, the area they're responsible for is under control and now they're looking around for something else to do without checking. And that's what I have found to be the case and didn't matter what the name of the organization was. A classic was the regional and it's health thing, there's still a lack of clarity at our level, my level, on how that really should function. And they're about to try to put together something under the, the veil of COVID response. That is probably gonna have far, more far-reaching effects, empire building specifically. Now Douglas County just pulled one, a fast one, you were dated, they pulled out of their tri-county healthcare coalition and set up their own board. That's the kind of things that are happening right now and that's part of the health officers getting fired, quitting and things of that nature. There was not a clear, this is your job, you do your job, stay out of everybody else's way.
Okay, so all of that, I, I have no room to argue, it's not, that's, that's not my goodness. But I will say, for this grant, our purpose is to train public health professionals as well as we can to be ready to respond. And that's when they're called upon, so how this whole incident command structure works is that if the incident commander says. Diane, you're going to be our planning op chief or planning or ops chief. That's where she's gonna sit in that incident command and that is entirely at the discretion of that incident commander. So um what we know here is that if we're responding to a local public health emergency. Our department will respond, will initiate their own incident command um within our department. So whoever is designated as the incident commander at that point. Will then disperse some of the duties to try and make sure that we're staying on top of any public health issue that comes up. And this is a similar structure that's going to be initiated in any of those categories that are responding, so behavioral health has their own. If a, an incident comes up where they believe that they're going to need to respond to a disaster. They'll set up their own internal command and they'll disperse those activities. And they will be as prepared as they can be to respond and then a larger, um depending on the sort of disaster. The structure will be made at a larger area and they, that incident commander will pull from different sectors. To ensure that there's representation and that we're ready as a community to respond. So for the purposes of this grant, that's what we're doing, we're training people and we're preparing as well as we can for an emergency. Because regardless of any politics, senses or anything else that's gonna come up, we know that, that if there is a public health disaster. We're going to have to engage, we're gonna have to be there. So this funding makes sure that we have a structure in place, but it's not a bunch of people running around like me who know nothing about disasters, but. Can do your paperwork, that's useless, we don't need me, we need Diane, so that's what we're, that's what we're setting up, she's trained, she's prepared. She's ready to help ensure that we're meeting our requirements.
That, that helps explain, thank you.
Great, um so that's what we're doing with her, this also means that um. River Grande County Public Health is engaged in the healthcare coalition, that is a part of this requirement is that we send a member. To that coalition, um it doesn't require that we play any specific part in this funding, doesn't require that we act in any ways the fiscal agent. Or we take on any of that responsibility, that's a separate group. Um this does require that River Grande County Public Health also works with our regional epidemiologist. As we do not have that capacity on our staff, we need to make sure, or this document makes sure. That we are communicating back and forth with that person so that we have information on communicable diseases and. Information on any issues that are coming up or, for instance, when COVID came up and it didn't come immediately into Rio Grande County. We needed that information, even though it wasn't in our county, so this regional epidemiology approach. Make sure that we still get access to that information and that is tied into the disaster grant. Um so we do need to provide a certain number of trainings, we need to participate, I'm sorry, in a certain number of trainings. The people who are attached to this grant, so those do take place every year, it's in our deliverable plan. And we also need to submit certain plans to the state and those are how will you respond in case of an outbreak? How will you respond um? A, a specific outbreak, a flu outbreak or um we fill out those paperworks, Diane fills out those paperwork and she sends those back up to the state. We're also required to engage in exercises that are held regionally in our area. And that's where everybody comes together and they, they practice a disaster, so we're required to engage in those for the funding here. It's different exercises we've got to participate in. And then we are required to increase our office confidence and our resiliency in responding to public health. Emergencies and that's really just sharing information with the state and then sharing information regionally and learning. About the processes that are involved in responding to a disaster. So those are our requirements for our existing funding for EPR. Okay, alright, so Trish, you're gonna be excited. This is about seventeen thousand five hundred and seventeen dollar PO with the state that's here, it exists. This is an EPR extension, so this is um Emergency Preparedness and Response Fund. You will see this on your hand manual chart, this is the PHEP phase one funding. You see that it says phase one, there was a phase two, we were all in disarray and nobody applied for that. Nobody knew it existed, so we didn't get to phase two and I, I think that's okay, I think we'll be alright. So the um end date on this contract is interesting, it's three fifteen twenty-one. And I'm sorry, this isn't a contract, this is a PO with the state, so we can invoice against this um purchase order. Rather than being engaged in a full contract.
The other thing that the concierge told staff.
So that is because this is one of the few. So that is because this is one of the few funding opportunities where we have responded in the COVID section that we responded, that we would like to spend these funds on staffing. So we made that restriction ourselves as the department.
So that's why the PO came down as for staffing then?
They sent us a budget and that's how we'd like to spend those funds. And it was responded to that we would like to spend those funds on staffing.
I got you there, but good. So we've got one green line for that particular program. But potentially we could have done something else with that. You got a green line?
We could have done some for the supplies and operating. And I think, I, that, that doesn't make me mad at all. I think we've got, we've got plenty of room. So I don't mind that that was the decision that was made. And so this is in response to COVID activities. And like you pointed out, this is all going to go down to staffing. So the other requirements that are involved in this statement of work are really not important for our conversation. There are some other things that we could have engaged in, but that's not going to be us. So we're just going to need to demonstrate on any amount that we take off of this, that we are responding, that it's staff who are responding specifically and we're not included in a regular budgeted activity. The next one I've got here is our ELC. And this is the three-year funding, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and six, six hundred and forty dollars. And these are more specific than some of the other COVID funding that we're receiving. And this is to strengthen and support local public health agencies responding to COVID nineteen by funding personnel to perform critical containment activities such as disease surveillance, case investigation, contact tracing and testing based on jurisdictional needs. But also going to support our response to outbreaks, infection prevention efforts at healthcare and other settings and promote health equity aspects to the response. This is going to allow us to spend for nursing. This is going to allow us to spend for contract tracing. And it's going to allow us to spend for the supplies and operating and potentially travel expenses that are associated with that. So we haven't done a budget breakdown for this yet. That's something that we're working on and will need to get. And this is really us telling them what we need, how we need to separate these funds out and just reporting that back. So they're not, they're not coming down and saying twenty percent should be staffing and the rest should be supplies. That's going to be, we're reporting that up. So our objective, another objective that we're going to have is increasing knowledge of infection prevention and control within the jurisdiction. And I think that is going to be some of our messaging, some of what we're talking about with cleaning supplies in supporting the county in infection control.
We're still on ELC?
Those efforts, yes. We are going to incorporate health equity principles into COVID epidemiological and testing response activities.
What's that mean?
So that is saying that there are members of our population who are less likely to receive information, are less likely to take it seriously. So this is providing translation services. This is doing outreach through potentially non-traditional needs. So we may be delivering letters versus posting on Facebook. So we're responding as a region or as a county to those needs that we identify as these people, these groups are not being identified. So we're going to demonstrate to the state that we are making special efforts to reach those populations. And one, for instance, is that we spend time faxing back and forth with members of the Amish community to ensure that they're receiving our information, just like when the mask order came down. There's not Facebook. So somebody needs to communicate this. So we will travel to the area or we will fax the people who we know will take the message along. So we'll put some of our time toward contacting those individuals to make sure that everyone has equal access to information and for materials that they may need to prevent infection. And what we've just got to do is say this is how we ensure that our response is equitable and we return that back in report. And we are also required to work with the state database and tracking. So we're going to make sure that our numbers are matching state numbers and that we get this data reporting on the COVID response and the actual numbers as close to perfect as we can. That we're all clear on what the numbers are and how many people are actually active and being treated and where they are and how we're handling that. Anything else on that one? This next PO also comes through EPR, the Environmental Emergency Preparedness and Response at CDPE. And this is the CARES Act forty-one thousand nine hundred and seven. And this funding, what we've received so far is a memo. That's what you see here. And what's allowable to be spent with this funding is necessary expenditures incurred during a public health emergency with respect to coronavirus. Anything that was not accounted for in the budget most recently approved. So our actual county budget and that were incurred during the period that begins March, March first, twenty twenty and ends on December thirty, twenty twenty. So this one, we need to make sure that we're spending ahead of the others. That's really going to be the priority with it. And this is staffing and operating. So anything that is COVID specific. What we're going to use for this? Awesome. Back up. So you, no, that was a lie. HCC. You probably noticed in reviewing this contract that we did see an increase, a small increase. It went from one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-two last year to one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy this year. And that was partially just as how this contract was set up. It has increased incrementally through the, the life of the contract, just like we talked about with CTC each year, this is being renewed, but we're not yet to a point where an RGA has been released to apply for the new, the next set of years. HCC. Our contract is actually, we are operating as a fiscal agent for the healthcare coalition, which is a group of stakeholders involved in healthcare activities in our region. So we are deliverables on this. We are responsible for the deliverables, but we have contracted with Cynthia to work with the healthcare coalition to ensure that those deliverables are completed. So we are responsible for the deliverables, but no member of our staff is individually responsible for completing those deliverables. This grant is a little bit different than the rest of them in that way. So if a deliverable weren't to be accomplished, we would then need to communicate with the state what went wrong and how that happened. But our real recourse would not be through staffing and it wouldn't be through the state. It would be through Cynthia and that coalition and letting them know that the deliverables weren't met. And then ultimately, if we couldn't come up with some kind of solution, we would end that contract.
But we'd still be obligated for any deliverables that weren't met in that fiscal year?
Yes.
How many seats do we have on the steering committee?
Do you remember these details? I can find it in here.
We have Jody's on there and then Diane. We have Art.
How many does the county or how many are we supposed to at all?
I'm just wondering how many representatives from Rio Grande County sit on that steering committee?
Okay. So Diane's also on there. Jody, Diane and Art.
Jackie Stevens no longer on?
No, Jody actually took that position.
Who reports, since we're ultimately responsible? Who reports back to us?
We're present as this resolution.
Yeah.
Who reports to this board?
It had been Emily as the co-chair had been reporting back to the board on, theoretically on the activities of HCC. What we can report is contractually whether or not we're meeting our deliverables. So that would be held at public health now. It had previously been held just as one of the county programs. So it wasn't a public health program up until last year. For instance, Cynthia wouldn't pick up her checks from public health. She would just come directly here. She had a county account rather than going through public health. And then that was transferred to public health to become part of that responsibility.
How'd that happen?
The intent originally seems to have been that HCC would have a stricter fiscal agent relationship with the county. So that they would be entirely responsible for these activities. You have fiscal agent responsibilities with other, is it Homeland Security? It's very similar. So it is a fiscal agent agreement and there's an MOU between that agency taking care of those deliverables and the county that outlines different expectations than we have with HCC. So with the healthcare coalition, we have a contractor who we're saying we've engaged to do those deliverables.
We being public health or the county?
The county. Similar to the rest, our contracts are with Rio Grande County. They're not generally with public health.
So you said something about Cynthia picking up her check here versus there. What does that mean?
So the commissioners or the board of health had previously not taken HCC on as a public health responsibility.
Have we now?
Yes.
When did we do that?
I believe it was just for last year that it had just happened.
You guys familiar where the board of health did that? Cause our board of health wasn't even legally constituted then.
I'm familiar too. So were we not the fiscal agent?
The county was. Public health was not engaged in that. We weren't.
But we've been told throughout this process that the county, not the board of health, is a fiscal agent and Cynthia is responsible to us.
Yes, the board of health has.
Not the board of health.
Right. But as far as I understand, the county commissioners, the board of health has engaged public health to run this program.
You guys familiar with that? Do you remember that?
Is that one of the grants that did not live in this office? Are you familiar with that, Trish? I'm not at all. I mean, I'm wondering, because I've only seen last year's contract. So I did see the one prior. Who signed the year prior contract? Was it public health, not commissioners? Is that why you're?
Not last year's. So you'll see on contractor in the, this year, it's the board of county commissioners of Rio Grande County for the use and benefit of Rio Grande County Public Health. And I believe that that has been new for the last two years. And I'm going off of my.
While you're doing that. Do we need a break from anybody?
I guess if we're gonna take a, take a short, short, that'd be fine. Is that okay with you? These masks make me dizzy enough for a while, especially when you're a mask maker. And whenever, whenever it fogs up your glasses, you have the choice of breathing or seeing. And it's a bit awkward. Are you doing okay? There is a medical exception. I know you don't have to worry if you have medical.
I sent it to Cynthia yesterday.
Tony?
Yes.
I really, you're doing a great job. I didn't know we were doing this today. Okay.
I asked for three hours, John.
You did?
I did, on the last meeting.
At the last meeting, you asked for that? Okay. Well, we've had some things developed since then that we probably need to deal with today. And particularly when we get to the ACC, I think we may have some questions. Obviously we've got one like who's, who's in charge?
I found nineteen and it does say that it was signed. So these now say that they're signed for the benefit or for the, for public health. This one just says Rio Grande County.
Ryan just mentioned to me, we've got some, some, an executive session that may be fairly involved as well, thank you. And he was suggesting that if we could, can we do this in orders? How's your, how's your schedule with Monday? Does that work?
Actually, next week is the week I'm trying to take off mostly.
Oh, that's right. Monday we have that audit. Yeah. You know, when I see the agenda, there's no three hours marked on it. So I, when I was looking at this, I didn't think it. Cause I knew developments since our last meeting have kind of overtaken us. What do, what do you guys think?
Well.
It is a three-hour discussion. I'm not, you're not, and I'm getting more information, you know, in this that I've gotten in over the years. It's good information.
Do you have someplace else to be?
Today? No, we have an executive session.
One of them has rescinded. So I think.
I don't know who's rescinded. So but we need Ryan in the conversation because, or they rescinded. I can't operate on secret information. Tell us upfront that this is what's happening. But we'll wait till Ryan gets back in here and see what he thinks.
I think that we need to get this done. And then we don't have to have the same questions.
Typically, this would be, this really is a work session type conversation because it's not, no actions required. And probably should have been scheduled as such, but that's not your responsibility. Or no, we'd schedule a lunch break in here if we were going to run over, or we would have made this an afternoon session.
You all let me know if you want me to come back later today or you want.
Cynthia's last name?
Ford.
Christie with a C, you're okay.
Okay, thank you.
And this is not. Tony, this has nothing to do with anything you're doing. This is, I mean, I'm getting a lot out of this personally. But I also, we've got some other things weighing on us and. It has to do with just organizational scheduling on an agenda as part of it.
Oh, one, one question. Nancy?
Molina.
I knew that one.
I just feel bad.
M O L I N A. Absolutely.
And while we're sitting here, for clarification, you say that we signed the healthcare coalition grant as the board of county commissioners for the benefit of the public health agency?
For the use and benefit of Rio Grande County Public Health. Yes, for this year. For this year and last year. The year before that was, this last line just wasn't there. It was just Rio Grande County. And I'm not sure why. I'm, I've, I was just vaguely aware that it was a thing that happened.
I don't even remember that coming up as a topic. Doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I don't remember that.
Would we, would the board have even known the distinction when they signed the grant unless it was called their attention?
I'm not sure.
And what's the significance, the difference?
It means that the public health department is now responsible for, to the board to ensure that these deliverables are met.
Ryan?
Yes, sorry.
No, you're, I'm trying to figure out, this is just a logistics thing. This is a big chunk right in the middle. We've got other things around it. Monday doesn't work because we have the audit work session. Tony's not available next Wednesday. Our choices are to continue with this briefing or continue with this briefing uh, right now. And then we still have the healthcare coalition contract. Right, we did that, right? Okay, the general COVID business. We've got the Baxter Hill Tower, the sales tax report. But then we have an executive session. Trish just informs me that one of the participants has opted out. I don't know who that is. So um, I don't know what your timeline is. We want you here for the executive session.
Let me, so I am trying to rearrange it as we speak because I can anticipate this going longer.
Well, we can move this, we can move the rest of this discussions to another point that, but.
Well, let me, I guess, do you mind if I ask, Tony, does any of this require any action of the board or is this education for the board?
This is all education.
Okay, so I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate to set these types of matters on work sessions since they don't require action or uh, any policymaking on the part of the board.
Or as an alternative, um, what if we move it to the end of the meeting? So we can.
I've got, I've got meetings this afternoon too, so.
Okay. I would remind you guys that it was specifically asked that it was after this meeting and dated for the day. I was remembering last week, just a reminder.
Um, cause what my thought was is, is possibly move it to the end of the meeting after the executive session and that way it, is since it's informational, at least Ryan could lead.
Right, so.
Or he wouldn't need to be involved.
It's your meeting, so you all decide how you want to conduct this. If you go back to your governance policy, your agenda items are supposed to be set for only, your meeting agendas are those matters that are specifically within the purview and the decision making of the board. If this doesn't involve decision making, then I would say set it for uh, a work session or some other time. Um, but again, it's your meeting, so if you want to move it to the end of the meeting, um, and you're not paying me to be here and um, don't run into any conflicts with the executive session, then that's concerning to do that. But I think that this is more work session topic.
And I know that previously we've had a kind of a space, a space holder at the end of the meeting for a work session. I recognize that we don't today. But.
Trying, timing on this, this is necessary and useful. Is it? Is there anything we're gonna learn right now that we're gonna have to incorporate in the next couple of weeks in any kind of decision making?
My goal, like I said before, is that we can get past basically asking, why do we bother with public health and what are y'all doing? And we can move on to how are we going to get things done.
Okay. Uh, is there anything before you right now where because we haven't had the briefing and haven't gotten beyond, keep, keep asking the same questions. Is there anything before you right now that would be affected by this?
I would say that my portion of the executive session is knowing that you have that information, but I believe that during the executive session, if we needed to refer back to the contracts and feels, we could do that at that time.
No, I'll defer to the board for time sake today and the potential for an extensive executive session. Would it be okay if we set aside, because we're just getting into the healthcare coalition, right? Just opening that. If we were to take the break here, I've, I've absorbed a lot, but a lot of it, I might have to go back and reread my notes. Just, just so I understand what's going on. Uh, if it would be okay, free you up now with the understanding we come back, not next week because you have conflicts and we have conflict on work session day. The following week on a work session day, set that time aside and devote it to you. Would that be okay?
That's fine. I'm happy to come back.
Is that okay with you guys? That's fine with me. Okay, Suzanne?
Fine with me.
Okay. If you don't mind, we'll do that. And then when we go to executive session, we're ready to discuss your executive session issues today. We can just give you a holler. I assume people go to lunch around here, don't they?
Um, some of them might. I don't know. I haven't tried it myself.
I've yet to see it.
Well, I thought maybe the people that actually work here every day went to lunch.
So I, I am absolutely fine with this. I would like to say that for our planning in the future, um, first, I do want to make sure that we're in board of health right now, and I don't know.
We're always in board of health or board of county commissioners. That formality, sometimes we do that just to be very clear, but anytime the board sits as the board of county commissioners, they also sit as the board of health.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure that when we are timing the meetings with the work sessions, I want to know how I'm best gonna get that information to you and make sure that we do get it. I.
The way the procedure works is contact the county administrator. She is to contact the chair. We're to coordinate the agenda. That didn't happen this time. So I had no idea that you needed a three hour block. I mean, you may have mentioned in a previous meeting, I did not know that's what we were doing yesterday. Okay? And so break down a communication on our end, not your end. And so, uh, but I really do want to devote time to it because I really do want to hear what you have to say.
Yes, and I will be back for that. Um, and just let me know. I've already got the okay from the staff will be discussing in the executives, if that could be added to that. They are aware. Yeah, and they're not interested in coming up for that, but.
Will you shoot me an email with your phone number? Um, just because I want to talk to you about that HCC contract.
Okay.
And make sure that if we're gonna be the fiscal agent as we propose to be.
Yeah.
Um, that we have some safeguards and controls to ensure that not only the deliverables are met, but the person charged with needing those deliverables, and she's not on our staff, that we have some control over that. And I just want to make sure that that language is there. It may already be in that HCC contract since I haven't reviewed it, but since the buck stops with us, I want to find out what it is that the county needs to do to ensure us and make sure that we're not liable or on the hook for something that doesn't get met.
I don't know what, i- if we wanted to pursue or if there's a use for actually having an agreement with the coalition. Because we don't have that at this point, that they're responsible for anything as this.
And then that concerns me a little bit because they can make a bunch of decisions and that's why I asked the number of people sitting on the board and the steering committee. If the votes aren't allocated properly, then um, I'm concerned that they have the power to vote and obligate the county and um, even though they don't legally have the power to obligate, we could still be on the hook for the grant since we're the fiscal agent. And I just want to make sure that we're careful with that. And if you and I can have a greater conversation, then I can advise the board better.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
Before you leave, is there anything COVID that you need to know about? Latest numbers, anybody died?
We have eight. No one, we don't have any additional fatalities. We are anticipating that a couple more are going to be released this week. So um, we're, we're waiting to see if the numbers come up, but we are fairly steady right now. And um, probably at our next board of health or whenever I come up again to present to you guys, we'll discuss the CDE guidance for schools, the CDE and CDPHG guidance for schools and what that's gonna look like in our county.
Yeah, we need, we need to get on that because I'm getting a lot of calls and I don't know how to answer.
About schools?
Absolutely. If you want to pass them on to us, Ida's studying that um, guidance and I'm looking through that guidance and we're.
That's really a public health school issue, isn't it? Uh, I mean, cause they're getting their own guidance, I assume from Department of Education statewide.
Yeah, so CDPHG and the Department of Education, they worked together to create this guidance. And it is supposed to be a, kind of in partnership with the schools and the public health agencies to make sure that we're doing the best that we can.
And we've got a copy of that the other day.
I've saw some of that, but I, again, it's one of those overlapping responsibilities and who, who's really doing what.
Yeah.
I really appreciate what you're doing. This is exactly kind of breaking that national focus over here.
Well, finish it up.
Okay, we'll give you a holler for the executive session.
All right, will that be a text from Trish?
We have, um, then, if we could knock these other two out, then we go to executive session. And cover that tip on that page.
Perfect, let me know.
Thank you. Unfinished business Baxter Hill Tower, is this an action item?
Potentially an action item. Trish forwarded me a letter from, is it Leon Montoya? Um, an email, a letter, excuse me, um, just wanting to know what our timeframe was for removing the equipment from the Baxter Hill. Whatever that is up there. Now, so there's some communication equipment up there. I had previously sent a letter to, um, what agency is that?
BLM.
BLM, thank you. To BLM, basically letting them know that we had, didn't have a concrete plan in place as to how we were gonna remove that equipment, but that we were in talks. Um, and they just wanted some indication that it was in fact our plan to remove the equipment or use the equipment or do whatever. Um, that's one of those uh, issues that's kind of gone by the wayside with COVID. And I think we need to circle back around. They're holding off on billing us for anything through September thirtieth, but need to come up with some game plan as to how the equipment's gonna be removed or we're just gonna continue to lease that site. I don't know um, what the board's position is, but I guess we need to figure out what, some direction on that Baxter Hill.
Well, since it was presented that that was a life threatening thing to try to take that tower and building down, what's our lease payment on it?
Well, didn't, didn't BLMs basically take away that as an option?
They, they did.
Initially, they did, yes. Right? They don't want to take it down either. That's it.
So yeah, your only other option, I think, if Patrick's people can't do it, and it's probably outside the scope of Roden Bridge anyway, then try to figure out if there's a contractor, put it out for bid.
Take it out with a helicopter, which is gonna be, yeah. See, originally I thought they could just knock the tower down, knock the building down, slide off the hill and then pick it up down below. And they can't do that because of where it's, where it's at or whatever. They, they ruled that out at one of the previous meetings that they showed. They got the material there. They built the thing and we can't get it back out.
Yeah.
Can't get there from here. Well, the leash might be cheaper to tear it down.
So we can explore whether continuing the lease even without utilizing the communication equipment is an option available to us. Um, if that's not, then I think what I would advise is that the administrator put it out for bid to uh, basically get somebody to demolish it, remove it. And then we can just be done with that issue once and for all.
I think that is, cause I at one time heard that BLM did not want to continue to lease it to us. And.
I remember in the original conversation, we had the one that come back that said, but I, I think if you can't go up and take it down and bring it out, the other choice is to drop, pick it up with a helicopter. You still gotta send a crew up there and unbolt everything and they pick it up. Well, I've never seen the site, so I'm having a hard time visualizing the challenge. It's straight uphill like this. You have to pull yourself on a mine jack type thing, you know, to pull yourself up the side of the hill to get the, can you come down from the top or over the back? I mean, is there another access one?
Can you install this thing? How?
I think that was before OSHA.
Well, somebody said they weren't sure if the tower was set, set there with a helicopter. I heard that said too.
It's possible.
They could, they would have. How long has it been there?
A very long time.
After fifty years on BLM land, it becomes an artifact.
I don't know.
That's why you can't pick up beer cans.
Oh, I didn't know that.
You can't pick up a beer can?
Not for over fifty years. There goes my Saturday. Yeah, sorry, sorry to ruin your.
I would say let's, let's look into it and see if they would even entertain that idea.
Why, I can't remember why they had stated that it was still necessary to take a thing down at the beginning.
I think they're tired of it being there. And at one point, at one point, they had, if I remember correctly, they had offered to help us take it down and the commissioners at that time didn't act on that. And so then they removed that offer and.
But Ryan, you're in touch with the BLM representative.
He's been in touch with Trish and she's forwarded these to me. I can be in touch with them. I sent the initial letter to, basically to first to the billing office and then directly to Leon in Montavista. Um, never received any reply. Apparently they did suspend the billing, so presumably they received the communication. Um, I can contact him and ask if uh, re-leasing is an option, if they would renew their offer to assist us in removing and what that would entail. I don't really think I have any ability to solicit for bids, but I can get back with you.
But if no, and if we have to go the bid route, we can then solicit. So we comfortable live, Ryan?
Yeah, yeah. I'll just reach back out to.
I think we have an opportunity to do this. So do we have any more discussion on that right now? Okay, moving on. Sales tax, lodging tax and H U T F.
Under unfinished business, I did have one request. I still need the information from Monday's CDRF work session so that I can start putting together that collaborative agreement. Um, Trish said she was gonna forward that to me, either the entire recording or just the main points for incorporation into the CDRF agreement.
So you want the original uh, emails that all the municipalities gave, am I misunderstanding you?
Yes. So there was, and maybe it didn't take place at Monday's work session. I couldn't attend, so I don't know, but Monday's work session for the CDRF funding was to be a discussion on what the county's role would be in administering that CDRF funding.
That's been happened as well, that conversation.
Okay, so then we need to circle back around and probably have the board discuss what the county's role is gonna be in that CDRF funding so that I have some guidance in putting together that collaborative agreement. Um, I can put together a collaborative agreement that looks very similar to what is it, Warton? It's not Warton County. Custer County did. They are the only county in the state that is essentially acting as a fiscal agent for the CDRF funding, so I can talk to them and see what it is that they did and see what will work best. We also have those other templates that we received from the county, but I know that we need to get this collaborative agreement going before it comes time to start distributing and dispersing some of this money. So um, I know Suzanne in particular had some concerns about the county being a fiscal agent. And so if those concerns have been resolved, then I'll put it together. If they haven't been, just let me know what the county's position is, the board's position is on the county's role.
Well, part of it was wanting to see where we're setting. This is a partial.
Yeah.
She doesn't address the CDRF eligible activities. That's one of the things that I was hoping would be clearly identified. But it's kind of just stumbled along and and that's where I requested is that information. I will get it on my own if I have to. But we kind of need to know even what's an eligible activity before we start doing this grab bag. Sitting municipalities asking for money, right?
Well, um. Well, um. Am I correct in saying that that decision has already been made? That we are the fiscal agent because of the way it was uh done?
No, so if you'll remember when you guys had a vote on the C D R F funding, we just did decide to submit a letter. Along with the municipalities for that opt-in portal. Um and I think you specifically reserved the right to have further discussion on what the role would be um of the county. Um and so that discussion, to my knowledge, has not yet occurred. We did say we wanna receive this C D R F funding. We haven't identified what our relationship with municipalities is gonna be and solidified that by way of an agreement.
And have we gotten the information from the municipalities? We've gotten very little. And so.
What information were you asking for from the municipalities?
Well, they were very, very slow in even signing anything, and then we asked them for.
We did get a Excel from each of what they've spent today at that time.
They they gave us the information we requested at the time, but before we went any further, we needed to know what else, what the program's gonna look like. And we don't wanna get the cart in front of the horse here.
So I don't wanna oversimplify it, but you could say, you know, the counties and municipalities are opting in for this funding. And each will submit their own expenditures. You have this total nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that could be allocated. And reimbursed and C D P H E cuts, or sorry, not C D P H E, DOLA cuts a check to each one of you. Or municipalities, you send in your stuff to the county, the county reimburses you, then the county bills DOLA, and then we get reimbursed. We can still put in there in that agreement provisions for the municipalities to be responsible for reimbursing us, and that's what I would obviously advise. Um and if the board is comfortable with that manner of proceeding. Where municipalities send us their things, there is some kind of quality assurance measure at the county to say. Okay, it's town of Delmar, you submitted all of these things, we're gonna reimburse for all, but this item, which I don't think fits that criteria. We submit that reimbursement to the town, we invoice the state, we get that reimbursement. If we're good with that, then I have uh enough information to proceed with a collaborative agreement. If we instead wanna say, you know what, as a county, we've been allocated this nine hundred and sixty thousand. But Delmar, you submit that to DOLA and we're gonna incorporate that into the agreement. Riverine County will submit its own expenses for reimbursement to DOLA and so forth and so on. So um. I know it was the municipalities' preference that the county be kind of the clearinghouse for all of that. Um but I also know that there was at least some reservation that needed to be discussed. Or there was a desire to discuss that further as to whether the county would continue to fill that role. But if that need has been resolved or that concern has been resolved, then I can proceed with option one as I described.
I still have a concern with what is the penalty if. Or what happens if one of the things that's submitted that we reimburse the town for. That the state comes back and says, this is not reimbursable, what kind of a thing do we have in there that says? The city has to reimburse us for their their expense, and what is the penalty if they don't?
So there would be a clause in there saying that they have to do it, and they have to reimburse us for any impermissible expenditures. The enforcement mechanism of that is always the question and how you go about. Recouping that money or being indemnified by the municipality. Um I think, you know, it all depends on the relationships that we have with the municipalities as to what would be. How we would be able to receive that reimbursement. We would also have to have a lot of confidence that within the county, we have the ability to look at those expenditures. And then go back to the municipalities and say, I'm not reimbursing you for this expense because I don't believe that it fits with the C D R F funding.
But that also puts the responsibility for making that decision on our staff.
Yes, yes.
And that's basically what we tentatively agreed to do in the conversation.
Right, I don't think it was ever formalized, but you're tentatively, there was that agreement. And um I think probably if the county wants to. Deviate from that tentative agreement, it would warrant further discussion with the municipalities. So that you maintain that relationship. I would think that that would be prudent, but um if we wanna stick with that. Tentative agreement and formalize it, then that's what we need to do by way of this um. C D R F, and then we need to get that set on a board accounting commissioner's agenda. So that you can review the actual proposed agreement, and you can make a decision if you're comfortable with that role, if we need to revise it.
So is there any reason we need, do we need to have another conversation with the city or the town managers? Anybody think we need to redo? Brian, Brian Stinner was pretty diligent about how he figured his stuff. His stuff, oh, I don't remember seeing Delmar's. Did we get Delmar?
Delmar actually did a pretty good job, did they? Okay, yeah, actually, Monty's the one that. Kind of cracked up, cause Dan Hicks is all over this on day one and Southport. Uh Bernie was very much on it, Center was on it. The question, the concern I have is at the time this was announced, there was lack of clarity on exactly what was eligible. How did we use this?
I think there's still this lack of clarity.
And I was told that we'll never spend all that money in this county. Well, I know better than that. The question is, where do we spend it? And that's why I was asking for this. It's silly for us to. Take this money and buy something that cares that money to buy.
Yeah.
And so this is probably the most flexible pot of money we have in terms of dealing with the COVID. Impact besides just a direct public health side of it. And somebody's gonna figure that out, and they're gonna come in and say, you guys aren't doing anything with this, give us eight hundred thousand dollars, cause we're gonna go. Give money away to Ice cream shop. And so I wanted some clarification, so we knew exactly to the best of our ability, what we can do with it. And then secondly, it does it apply to our communities? Delmar have businesses in this community that are struggling to the point where they need help. Uh from what I've seen, some of these guys are pretty good, but we don't know. But that's the Chamber of Commerce conversation and D R G and things of that nature. So I've been loath to just start handing this money out. Without really looking at these other programs.
How how much study in have we done is, cause I haven't done a lot, but I've read up a little bit is the the loan thing, the actual loan thing that. That you can make the loans to the town businesses and stuff like that.
You can do any grant.
Is I, as a previous loan officer, I don't think the county wants wants to get in the business of a loan. Because the end of the. Indication of being alone means you have to get it back.
Yeah, well, they may, they may not call one, maybe it's called just a.
There's grants that are available.
I know there's, there is, there are counties doing that. And there's, and there's potential that capacity goes through an existing agency such as Assemblyman's Valley Revolving Loan Fund. And and but the application come through there, goes around like that, cause if we can either grant or loan. We're just acting almost as fast through anyhow.
And how would that work if the money has to be distributed before December? By December thirty, thirty first, whatever.
We have to get on the list, but what the revolving loan fund guys, D R G, O Edit, Tom Monaco and those guys. Are talking to people all the time about what their needs are, and we're having these conversations with the banks. And so we could very easily find out what the needs are, and can we tailor this program to meet those needs? But right now, we'll sit and talk for a half hour and still won't know it.
So maybe what I can propose is this. I can put together a draft agreement that we can discuss based on what was tentatively agreed with municipalities. And I think if we're going to try to. Adhere to the policy of this damn thing. Adhere to the policy of getting documents to the board to review the Friday prior. I don't have time to do it between now and this Friday. I'd be lying if I said I did. I do have time to likely get it done before the thirty first. And so if we can set this discussion in consideration of that draft agreement. Or is there a meeting scheduled for August fifth or a ring? I mean, that would be, I'm assuming we're gonna have one on August fifth, even though that's not highlighted, a special meeting.
That would be a special meeting.
Okay, we're taking up COVID related things on August fifth. So can I propose that as a tentative date by which we would consider this? I'll get a copy of this draft agreement to the board for consideration. I'll also copy the municipalities. For their input by the thirty first. Does that seem reasonable?
It would work for me.
Okay, if that's the direction the board's comfortable with, that's the directional proceed.
Five or six days, somewhere near.
Okay, okay. That's all I had.
Okay.
Okay, also, while we're in unfinished business, as per our discussion yesterday. We have a resolution uh that was done October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. That appointed Trisha Slater as the county administrator. And as of our discussion yesterday, that it would be appropriate to attach to this resolution. A job description. We have the job description that has been presented to us uh at least three times. And I would move that we uh. Update that resolution by date or whatever would be necessary in order to have it correct. And attach that job description to that resolution. That would be my motion.
Uh we may be having this conversation in the executive session. Ryan, do you have a thought on that?
Well, I guess regarding the resolution, would it be possible for you to email me a copy of that? Because what I'm thinking in my mind is that there would be a similar resolution from January of two thousand and twenty. And so that resolution would be the most recent resolution appointing uh county administrator. And so if we're gonna update a resolution, we need to update.
That one.
The twenty twenty resolution.
Okay.
Um and I don't think we wanna go back and just do an attachment to a previously adopted resolution. And I don't think that's necessarily what you were applying, implying, but if you.
I don't know the correct way to do it, but that's.
Right, so I think what you would do is have um. A new resolution referencing the previous resolution and attach and a job description. As part of that resolution and reference that as the attachment. Do you be comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, and is it, so is that your motion?
Yes.
That we do what?
That we update the, if you can give me the resolution number, Trish.
The last one?
Of the twenty twenty resolution, that'd be the first of the year appointing resolution.
I wanna say it's something like oh five, but I'm not. It's on our website, it's on Robin and where now.
So that we update that resolution by reference to include the appointment with the job description. It was Suzanne's motion.
Yes.
But we won't have that document. And we don't have the job description and stuff lined up, right?
We.
We had that conversation yesterday where there's clearly a lack of understanding of authorities and duties, so I would think we need to clear that up.
Yes, so you need to, if there are three different job descriptions or a job description that's been presented three different times, I'm not sure which it is. Have the board agree on what that job description is. And I would also say that if that job description doesn't include supervision responsibilities. That that job description would specifically either mention those job descriptions or by reference incorporate an organizational chart. More than we can get done today. Uh you can't accomplish that today.
So we had a motion, but uh I'm not sure what the motion for.
So the motion would be, as I understand it, the Suzanne's motion, if you wanna restate it Suzanne, I think would be to. Update Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one. As it pertains to the appointment of the county administrator, Tricia Slater. To include by reference an attached job description.
Yes.
But I'm just wondering if it's even premature for that motion. Does that make sense until we know what the job description is in the organizational chart now and that I'm thinking out loud?
Yeah, so it's just wasn't.
Um, do you want to put that on next week's agenda? Or so that we can actually.
I would like to take an action on this, because this is something that's been hanging out there since last fall. Since last October, and it was recommended to us to do this in October, and it still hasn't happened. I would like to see an action on this.
Today or soon. So clarify your motion. Clearly, we don't have a document in front of us that we can move on. So the only motion we could entertain is to direct our county attorney to work on this, basically. Which we don't have to have a motion to do that.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it if you want. But we can't, we can't approve anything right now.
Well, I don't think you have the job description in front of you right now. So that's my concern, and you don't have it specified within that job description. I saw the previous job description, and the previous job description does not describe any specific supervision or oversight. Or departments under the county administrator. My advice to the county would be that your primary issue is that ambiguity. In terms of who the county administrator supervises. So if you don't have that in the job description, then it doesn't make sense to.
We need to include the organizational chart at the same time.
Either that or you prefer it by language or do whatever.
Okay, well, then I would withdraw that motion, and I have another thought. We also have a resolution. From, okay, it's twenty twenty dash eighteen. That was revising temporary meeting rules and procedures concerning telephonic or electronic participation. And it talks about how we were going to have two meetings a week because of COVID. And that we revised it to having one meeting a week, but that we could still do it by Zoom. I'm going to propose that we go back to our two meeting a month. Of meeting schedule unless there is something regarding COVID that needs to be taken up. And in that case, we can have a special meeting, which is allowed in the rules. But this way, we're not taking up staff time for meetings every week when it's not necessary.
I'm I'm fine.
And that's my motion.
We're missing, we're missing a lot of things. I'm missing a lot of things. I know you guys are too, that we're not being able to get to. So if we didn't have that extra one set, I could still do it if we need to, then I'd be fine with that.
And likewise, setting the the Monday work sessions every week. And sometimes we have topics on there and we can talk for two or three hours and never accomplish anything. If we can put our work sessions after our regular meetings, then it would all be in one day.
These should have been on the agenda, not showing up as unfinished business. These, you're asking for action at a meeting. And for us to just sit here based on the whim of one commissioner or two and say, we wanna do this right now, you can do it. But uh you're being recorded right now on this. And it's probably, Jane, you've complained to me about knee jerk. Okay, this is knee jerk in my estimation. We had no idea this was coming. And I don't appreciate it, since I'm supposed to help work on the agenda, we could have incorporated and planned for. But I didn't know we were at a three hour meeting scheduled on here either, so uh we're back to the communication issue. And um that's just my position on it. There's no reason we have to act on it right now. We've got an executive session to deal with. And uh we were asking for the sales tax and lodging report. You could have added this to unfinished business when we talked about the agenda originally in a group. Simple as that. You were obviously prepared for it, so uh it could have been added then.
And I will say that I think our number of meetings, our length of meetings, has gotten out of control. We have a meeting, we have two to three meetings every week, and most of the time. Especially in our work sessions, we never have. We never get to a consensus. We never, and I know you're not supposed to make. We never, and I know you're not supposed to make a decision, but we don't even do anything but talk.
Give me a specific example.
Okay, um, the budget policy that was presented at, was that this week?
I see last week.
Okay, I don't know what week it was, but the budget policy. Nobody had even read it. We talked about it for forty-five minutes or an hour. And if you hadn't even read the document, then there was no point.
I guess we can go back and see who did the talking on that, budget policy. But I didn't even operate this, that came from the administrator. Okay? So we can set guidelines for the meetings. I don't like having unnecessary meetings any more than anybody else. But we haven't even gotten CRDF figured out. Okay, that is not this board's fault. All right, so yeah, it's gonna keep showing up. And we can sit here and chatter back and forth, or bicker, whatever we want to do. But until we get the documents that were requested from our people, there is nothing we can do. So we make a request, we expect the information to show up, and if it doesn't show up, we're stopped. Period. And we're getting ambushed with stuff all the time now. I shouldn't say ambush, but unanticipated things are happening. There are events happening in this county right now that are urgent, and we have to deal with them. Whether you agree or not, it's gonna come forth, and we've got to deal with it right now. We do have something to deal with. This isn't one of them.
So Suzanne, as far as your motion goes, would you, I think my best advice, since it wasn't on the agenda and it wasn't uh, part of the discussion for amending the agenda at the outset of this meeting, and there's already a meeting scheduled for next week, would it be possible to set this on next week's agenda?
Oh, sure, that would be dandy.
Okay, so if we can set it for next week's, then we can incorporate that with your original motion, and I can look at this resolution, the job description. Um, I I will try to make time, I have a position statement for the EOC due by the twenty-ninth, which will consume a lot of my time between now and then. Um, but you can figure out the job description and try to have that so that you can have a meaningful discussion next week. If that's, whatever, that's your decision, I guess. In terms of setting the agenda, I think you need to go back to your governance policy and how the agenda is set. But I would also say that if there's disagreement between the chair and the other board members, the other board members could vote to put something on the agenda. So I don't know if John has any problem with setting that on the agenda for next Wednesday. Then I don't think you need to worry about taking a vote now, but.
But you can't deal with it today anyhow in terms of.
I, I think the safest thing to do is not deal with it today, since it wasn't on the agenda and it wasn't part of amending the agenda.
However, everybody does have plenty of notice, so they can anticipate it, and they can read the documents or look into it in whatever manner is necessary.
Okay, um, so that two thousand and twenty eighteen was the, so, sorry Suzanne, can you just clarify for me if that was the original resolution that we passed for two meetings, or is that the amended?
That's the amended.
Thank you. And you're, at the time, I guess we'll see what your motion is next week. But as I understood, the motion that I anticipate you making, it's not to do away with the Zoom function or the leaving that flexibility for Zoom open. It's only to do away with the provision as it pertains to
Having where there's a required meeting every week, that it is only, that it would be called as a special meeting if necessary.
Okay.
Now, for the discussion on that, Ryan, partly patterned it a bit after Alamosa's, where they went ahead and set the meetings every week, and then would cancel right, they weren't required, and that was the discussion then. Not that they had to go, because they didn't want to go through the hassle of having to do the twenty-four-hour notice on a special meeting.
Right.
And since then, Alamosa has rescinded that, and they've gone back to their twice-a-month meetings.
I, I don't know, I haven't seen.
Yes, it was in the paper.
Okay.
I'll make sure to fish it.
All right, and then I think that two thousand and twenty dash eighteen was a revision of two thousand and twenty dash sixteen, so I'll look at both. All right, I'll have that ready for next week.
All right, we'll be through with the unfinished business part. Can we get down to sales tax, lodging tax, and HUTF?
So I was gonna share my screen here with you, just, um, so those visiting could also view. Okay, can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay, so we did receive our new numbers for sales tax, lodging tax, and highway users tax. What you're viewing right now is the graph.
For some reason, is everybody seeing the whole thing? Mine's just showing up the top half. Is, is that just me, or is everyone?
Alright, everybody.
Okay, what, this is what I'm seeing?
Well, is where it's just the.
Be accurate, so let me just go ahead and, I was scrolling down as you said that, how about now?
Okay, that's better.
Okay.
No, we can't see the last, last part, oh, I'm sorry, John.
And just to clarify what you see now, do you see the entire?
I do.
Okay.
Do you see it?
Yes, as you see, we do have still in, in increase. Um, if we go down to the next slide, we'll see it's sales by town. We just have yet to see that complete decrease as of yet. Now, on this one, sale of South Fork is the only one that has seen a decrease. We have the differences on the right-hand side, so our all-around Rio Grande County is fourteen fifty-two.
We can't see that. We can't see. We got over pictures of that.
Oh, I think you can move those pictures on yours.
Oh, is it your box? Yes.
Yeah. Is, I think if you just click the, the little minus sign, that'll get rid of it.
Now, Trish, I didn't see these in our documents.
So it was this morning to you, because I knew I was presenting it in person. So you do have a copy in your email to review afterwards, if you like. If I didn't, everyone's gonna be here, I would have printed some too. I'm just gonna keep scrolling here for you. That was April. And then May.
Slow down.
You've already seen these. Each month.
Right now, I want to see them now, you're showing them, I want to take some months to look at.
So this would be the most recent one right here. So for this last batch, we were eighteen thousand and thirty-seven increase. Town and Del Norte is the one that has a decrease for, and this would be for May. Montevista, close to twenty thousand, South Fork is on the upward at seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three. With a total for all municipalities plus county at fifty-eight, six, two, two, in sales tax.
From a budgeting standpoint, this is combined sales and lodging tax?
It is not, this is just sales.
Okay, it sells, says sales and lodging tax up there.
Graphs shows them combined.
This graph? On the middle tab at the top.
This is a tab right here, says sales and.
Oh, that's just the title of my document.
Well, we're gonna look at.
So this document does include both, yes, the graph you're looking at currently, we're just going over sales tax right now. But as I continue down there, go past these again. So now we're gonna be looking at the tourism lodging tax. And we are seeing a decrease in this one. Give me a moment to look at. Sorry. Not a good driver here. And as we look at the numbers, you'll see there is a definite decrease in the tourism lodging.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see the swing here, because I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna.
Yeah, because we're playing catch-up.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
So if we're looking at nineteen versus twenty, we really haven't seen a decrease, minor, twelve hundred dollars in June. And some of these actually.
Increases like in March.
And this, this last year was still from the high water incident.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the next one I'm gonna be looking at is the highway users. Give you a moment to kind of view the chart. So in speaking with Patrick with Groden Bridge, um, you know, of course, they have their group meetings, and they do suspect about eighty thousand dollars decrease in total for highway users.
For Rio Grande County.
For Rio Grande County. Now, and actually, when I went to go look up our report, we have not physically received this June one yet, but it's in the mail, so I went ahead and included it.
Patrick's probably all over that, I assume.
It seems to be, he is. So that's our, I mean, we've been keeping a close eye on these revenues due to COVID. And that's our newest update. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna share.
So you, you just, your tab on there is just the indicator that you put everything in that one file, right?
Correct, you know, many, a couple of months ago, there was a request to see it.
Virtual image to P D S.
Except you can't do that because you're just being shared. It's just being shared.
So.
It is in your email.
In this, we have, okay.
Any more questions on the sales tax, lodging tax, or HUTF? Then I, end of August, we'll see what it. And so this is in our emails that came out this morning.
Correct. And as soon as I can figure out how to. And share it here. We could move on if you want, I'm having a hard time getting my screen back to normal to even stop unsharing here.
Well, that, that's the last thing on the regular session, okay? Is there anything else before, on this? Any questions, okay? Ryan, your advice on executive session, what were you?
Uh, I would take, take a Tony's first. I heard that, I I don't even want to necessarily discuss the executive session topics outside of executive session, executive session. Um, but it looks like we have personnel matters under the executive session. Do you know how many personnel matters?
The one did rescind, I got an email about nine minutes before this meeting began.
Okay, so we don't need an executive, you know how many?
Well, we might on that, because we don't know who it is and what it was about.
Well, we might need that under, um,
Legal advice.
Conference with the county attorney, so we can table that. But in terms of personnel matters, I guess that there's one left that doesn't necessarily answer how many there are. So how many executive, is it just?
That's the only one I was aware of, well, plus Tony's now.
That she says she had three?
Tony, I don't know if they even coming up, are they?
No, they're not coming up, I think, I think if I remember correctly, it was three.
So at this point in time, I think it would make sense for the board to entertain a motion for, to adjourn into executive session uh, for personnel matters pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four oh two, four F, and then subsequently to go into executive session for conference with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific questions pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B.
And I would make that motion.
Second, the motion second, favor?
Okay.
Okay. And Diane, we can get back, yeah, we can get back to you with the time. I don't know that, unless we have something that we do after the executive session, regular session besides. I don't know where we'll be at that one.
So are we, are we gonna pause? You gotta log.
Oh, yes, we're gonna log off. If you guys could all log up, because I still could not. That's where I need a little help here, how to get back to normal to even stop sharing.
Amber.
That may not be good.
So do you think they'll leave it?
I've never had that. Um, it's, Ryan, it's okay if we have a statement when we come back as far as what we've done in the executive session, we can send that to Deanne?
Yes.
Okay. Logging off, thank you, everyone.